All right. All right, it's six o'clock. I'll call the meeting to order, meeting of the Carver Select Board for Tuesday, June 1st. If we could all stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would someone want to read our community prayer?
It's not on here.
Anybody have it?
I think I have it.
Hang on. I have it. Almighty God, humbly we pray your blessing as we concern our life with the opportunity to serve our community. Enhance us with your spirit of dignity and selflessness. May we become instruments of support and understanding as we seek to bring an environment of trust and purpose among all who provide the many services that make us all we can become. Help us achieve the goals of our commitment in this office that is now our responsibility. And especially, we lift our prayers for all the citizens of our community that we have been allowed to serve, that they may discover the fullness and joy of life that we all seek, and keep those serving in our armed forces and our first responders in our hearts and thoughts. This meeting is being cable cast by Area 58 Community Access Media, Channel 15, and will be posted by Area 58 on YouTube as soon as possible. There are openings in several committees. Please refer to the Select Board page on our website for a listing and application. The first item on our agenda this evening is citizens' participation. Are there any members of the public that would like to address the board? Seeing none. Up next is, we have a citation for our outgoing Finance Director, Meg Lemay. And just speaking for myself before I turn it over to the board, Meg, I can't thank you enough for all your hard work and dedication for the town. You provided me a financial education in how municipal government works, and I've learned an incredible amount from you, so I can't thank you enough. And are there any other members of the board that would like to have anything to say before we present the citation? Ms. Ewens.
Thank you. I want to thank you too, Meg. I've been here for a long time, seen a lot of town accountants, and you're the best. I wish you well. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Hoffman.
I want to thank you very much for your hard work in putting up with a lot of my questions that I've asked over the past year. I've learned a lot, and obviously our loss is no one's gain, so don't be a stranger, though. And keep taking my texts. Okay.
I have to go. I have to go.
All right. Yeah.
Mr. Bogart.
I have not worked with you as much as other board members, but I definitely echo their sentiments and thank you for what you've given and done to our town.
Mr. Belbin.
And I echo exactly what they say, and I'm going to emphasize that you have been the epitome of a professional in our town, and I appreciate it. Honest, truthful, and you stand up for everything that is needed in government. So, thank you very much. I appreciate everything you've done for our town.
Thank you. Why don't we go around our front? We'll join. Catherine's good.
Thank you so much for that. You try to push, which is...
Can you smile a little more? Very well deserved.
All right. Next up is the presentation of the Robert H. Merrick Public Service Award. Tonight, that is being awarded to Mr. Richard Ward. And who is speaking on behalf of the committee? Mr. Neef.
Good evening, everyone. So, it's a pleasure I'm here tonight to recognize Dick Ward, the Robert H. Merrick Public Service Award. We are here to honor a man who has dedicated himself for 50 years to the community of Carver. Dick Ward is a teacher, coach, mentor, selectman, a community leader, a creative director, a volunteer firefighter, a father, a family man. Ultimately, in all of these roles, Dick proved himself to be a man of integrity. In the fall of 1993, I began my career as a social studies teacher at Carver Middle High School. That year also happened to be Dick's final year as a physical education teacher in Carver. When I started in 1993, Dick became someone who I admired and aspired to be like. There was no formal arrangement, but he was a mentor to me. I was impressed by how I was respected by everyone in the school, teachers, administrators, coaches, parents, and students. I hope to one day have the same level of respect and admiration within the community. The funny thing is, I stand here today, and I feel the same way as I did in 1993. I can only hope that one day I will have the same level of respect and admiration within the community of Carver that Dick Ward does today. That respect that Dick has earned in his many roles in the community, including eight years a member of this board, or the Select Board, grows out of his positive approach and attitude in all situations, and by the example he sets through hard work and dedication. Dick always respects opposing opinions and points of view. He listens. After you meet with Dick on any issue, you may not always agree with them, but you always know he cares about the issues, but more importantly, he cares about you and respects your point of view. Though Dick has served the community in a wide variety of roles, I think his leadership was never more evident than his role as the chairperson of the building committee for the new elementary school. After a couple failed attempts to have the school supported by the voters of Carver, Dick was the perfect person to bring the community together to support the project. He did an outstanding job in that role as chairman of the committee. He facilitated meetings and allowed all stakeholders the opportunity to weigh in on the project. He was able to build consensus amongst the members of the committee and the community in support. Finally, and most importantly, he really became the voice in the face of the project, continuously and consistently promoting it throughout the community. Shortly after the building opened, we dedicated the gym in his honor. The plaque in the gym provides a great insight into why Dick is receiving the Robert H. Merrick Public Service Award this evening. The plaque reads, "In recognition of a lifetime compared to the time of Carver and the Carver Public Schools," Dick was a physical education teacher and coach in the pull-up of the Carver Public Schools for over 31 years. Through his teaching and coaching, he taught character, dedication, and tenacity, transforming the lives of thousands of students. He was a passionate advocate for the building of five schools in the region, including serving as the chairperson of the school building committee for the Carver Elementary School. Dick served the town in a wide range of relevant roles, including as a member of the board of the selectmen. Dick is well-known for his positive nature, his hard-working spirit, but most importantly, his approach of integrity. It is for these characteristics that he is admired by the community of Carver. In his nomination for Dick tonight, former selectboard chair Ron Clark wrote, "This award is named after Bob Merrick for a reason. Bob instills each of us with pride and inspires us to do our best by the town while being of impeccable moral character. Dick exemplifies these same virtues. We should all desire to have the dedication and commitment that Dick has provided to the community of Carver." Dick, thank you for all you've done. It's an honor that I had the opportunity to present you to the community tonight as the recipient of the Bob Merrick Public Service Award. Please welcome to the floor Dick. (applause) That may be a mere individual, but I don't know where, I don't know if people want to take pictures, but I think they have a picture of you there. I should have acknowledged the members of the community, Dean Robinson, Elaine Weston, all the members of the board.
I wonder if I could tell you a couple of stories.
Please do.
Maybe it's because Nick's fairly happy with him. I like that idea. We really don't want you in the picture at all.
I have Scott presenting this to me. Steve, don't give me that. This is a big deal. Sixty years in September, she's still waiting. Congratulations, Steve.
First of all, it's very meaningful for me to receive an award named for Robert Merrick Award. To me, he is the highest level you can go in community service. He was the minister at the United Parish Church, but he ministered everybody in town. It didn't make any difference if you were Catholic, Protestant, Jewish, Muslim, whatever. And he served in so many capacities, and two different times I had a chance to serve with him on the board of selectmen. Now, I did Scott said I was selecting for eight years. It was nine, that's okay. But also, I served way back in the 60s, late 60s, in a term on the board of selectmen. And so, and I was the town moderator for three years before that.
Oh, you're not that old.
Fifty-seven years, Momma and I have been here in town, and I am 81 this summer. Getting there fast. What I also wanted to do was mention Scott. I mean, he covered many of the years of our working together of back and forth, but I watched him for his first year of teaching, right through becoming the vice principal, becoming the principal, becoming the superintendent of our school. And he is dedicated himself to our town, to us working stiffs, and he's done a fabulous job. I really appreciate everything, Scott. Bob Merrick, I just don't, can't say enough about what he's contributed to our town, and what an honor it is for me to receive this award. It's unbelievable. What I, you know, I'm 81, so, give me patience, you know.
With that, you're a lot younger, so don't worry.
The most important thing I need to do is thank my wife. I wouldn't be here dressed up like this wasn't her, for her. She said, "You've got to look respectable so that you look smart." And so, here I am. But Judy's been beside me all the way. She raised our five kids while I rambled around the town, different committees and different things, and so, she was the mainstay. She served a number of years with Sarah on the Conservation Commission, and she served on the Community Preservation Act Committee, too. And several, and then she supported me all the way. You know, we had five kids, she was running around like crazy, and I was going to meetings. So, anyway, thank you, Judy. And Rick, I started, I don't know if this is the right thing to say, but Rick and one of our other selectmen, Frank Casey, were the ones that kind of conned me into running for selectmen. But I worked with Rick for a number of years before he went to Abington, and I feel very strongly that he's a good leader for our town, small town like us. And the community and you folks, you are volunteers, and you know, the community has to have volunteers. And, you know, whether I agree all the time, I remember talking to Jen way back when she was going to run for planning board, and she had a lot of good ideas, and I agreed with most of them. There was only one, I think, she and I disagreed with, but anyway. I have a great deal of respect for you who are working hard for our town with your own beliefs, and that's very important. You can't all be on the same channel. And so, I just think it's very important for people in our community to serve, whether you're a coach, whether you're on a committee, or you're running for office, or whatever the case may be. We need folks to do this. And the employees that we have, like in the school system, we need all our dedicated people, and we have a lot of dedicated people in our town. So, thank you very much.
Well deserved. All right, next up is a request for appointment to the Carver, Marion, and Wareham Regional Refuge Disposal District, Mary Dormer. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion. Will you approve?
Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I just want to let people know that the district still has almost a million dollars that we have to protect for the next 25 to 30 years, plus we have almost 10 acres of land that the existing Wareham Recycling and Transportation Station is. So, this is a vital position. We need to protect that money. We need to make sure that it's handled in the right way. All right? So, if you're interested, please apply. We possibly have another one available at the end of the month. Thank you.
Mr. Hoffman.
So, Bob, as of right now, we do have three members from Carver?
No, we do not. We only have two. John Carter has stated he's going to, at the end of his term, he's going to, not going to do it again.
So, if Mary gets approved, she'll be the second from Carver, then?
She'll be the second one, and John, until the end of the month, and then at the end of the month, we'll need another person.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous.
Mark, may I be excused?
Absolutely, Mr. Hoffman.
Ron's taking a bar.
I don't have a copy of our agenda packet.
Yeah, I don't have, I don't have that either. Mrs. Weston?
Yes.
I don't think we have a copy of the agenda packet on the computer. We have down to the pages for the 2021 annual appointments, but I don't believe anyone has anything else.
Mr. LaFond's evaluation results are here.
I don't even have that.
If you go to the main screen, it says the agenda, and then LaFond's evaluation. If you look at that, I have those two online.
I don't see the evaluation results.
I don't have it either.
No.
Well, you should have all had the evaluation emailed to you. So, you all saw it?
Yeah.
So, while she's working on that, I'll continue with announcing the evaluation results, and we can move from there. So, recently, the Select Board evaluated Mr. LaFond for the first written evaluation. We had done a previous, more casual evaluation, but we reviewed him formally for the first time. There were five scores that the Select Board could give to the town administrator. A one would be a fails to meet expectations. Two would be needs improvement. Three would be meets expectations or average. Four would be exceeds expectations, and five would be far exceeds expectations. And there were five different categories that we rated the town administrator in. Section one was goals and objectives, the Select Board goals and objectives for the interim town administrator for FY 2021, and the overall score for that was a 3.4. So, between average and exceeds expectations. Section two, knowledge, skills, and professional development. Again, the overall score for that portion was a 3.3. So, again, between average and exceeds expectations. Section three, the core responsibilities of the county administrator, staffing, personnel, financial and management relations, and the overall score in that section was a 3.4 as well. Section four was leadership, board relations, and personal qualities, and the score there was a 3.7. So, between average and exceeds expectations, but trending toward exceeding expectations. And then finally, section five, community relations and communications, and the score there was a 3.6. So, again, between average and exceeds expectations. So, those were the combined scores on the town administrator's evaluation. And I guess at this point, I would take a motion and a second on the board to accept those scores. Is there a motion?
I still move.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Well, I guess would we be accepting these scores, like, assuming they were calculated properly? Like, I want to trust that. I just want to make it clear, like, I didn't get copies of everybody else's scores. So, if I were to accept these scores, it would just be on the basis of trust?
Yeah, Mrs. Weston calculated the scores.
Okay.
And those are, those are correct.
Because I've not seen any of your evaluations. I don't know.
Right, and that's commonly how it's done. Commonly, we average the scores, and everybody, the Select Board, gets a copy of the average scores.
Okay.
Mr. Belbin.
Actually, it would probably be a good idea that we get to see what everyone else said. I mean, just to give us a heads up, because somebody may have something that we might want to say, you know? Yeah, maybe, maybe not.
I have no problem with that. I don't know, quite frankly, what personnel law would say to that, so I guess that would be a question I'll ask Mrs. Weston. As long as there was no issues with it, I'll be happy to have her share those with the board. Any other discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of accepting those scores?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All right. Moving on, discussion and possible vote for the Select Board annual appointments. Let's see, we have a number of appointments, and I'll read them off. To the Agricultural Commission, we have Leon Nash for a three-year term. For the Carver Cultural Council, we have Janet O'Connor and Gail Nowen, both for two-year terms. For the Conservation Commission, we have Savory Moore and Dan Badger, both for three-year terms. For the Earth Removal Committee, we have John Shirtliff as the trucking representative and Robert Aramo as the Select Board representative, both for three-year terms. As offense viewer, we have Robert Belbin for a one-year term. For the Recreation Committee, we have Caprice De Roget for a one-year term. And as special police officers, we have Michael O'Donnell, Walter Benoit, James Moscato, Patrick Charette, Ashley Odell, and Peter Allegwini, all for one-year terms. Is there a motion to accept those appointments?
I'll make the motion to accept those appointments.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Question.
Ms. Bogart.
I apologize, the, I'm forgetting town meeting and if an article was passed. Is there any conflict with anybody's commitment on one of these committees with any other membership that they have?
Not to the best of my knowledge. Mr. LaFond, are you aware of any conflicts?
I'm not aware of any. No, I mean, I haven't looked at it one by one, but I'm not aware of any conflicts. I mean, there are obviously some of these people that serve on other boards and committees, but not necessarily overlap of permitting authorities, for instance.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Mr. Belbin.
I actually went through these, and the only one that I thought may have been was Savory Moore because of historic district, but they do certificates. They don't do permits. So, I don't know if a certificate is the same as a permit, which I don't think it is, but that's the only one that I thought, so, and I didn't think there was a big issue with that, so, him being on the historic district, so.
All right. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor of approving the Select Board annual appointments?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Next up on the agenda is the contesting of two town administrator appointments. We'll take them individually. First is a contest by Mr. Belbin of Eric Mueller's appointment to the zoning board of appeals.
Mr. Chairman, shall I?
Ms. LaFond.
I did mention this to you, Bob, yesterday, that for the meantime, Mr. Mueller and I have had a conversation, and at the moment, we're going to forego that reappointment until such time that we get feedback or a decision from the Attorney General as to whether or not the recent bylaw regarding the permitting authorities and serving on more than one is upheld or rejected by the Attorney General. Should it be upheld, which I expect, then Mr. Mueller will not, will have to decide what board he chooses to be on. If it's not upheld by the Attorney General, then I've told Mr. Mueller that I would be more than happy to reappoint him to the ZBA. At that time, obviously, the board would have the same legal authority if you choose, but that's the way I left it with, excuse me, with Mr. Miller. Excuse me.
All right.
Nothing, no offense to you that I'm having trouble getting your name out, so, so that's the way we left it for now.
Okay.
And that would be in good faith with where we stand tonight, because I assume, Bob's concern was really one in terms of compliance with the bylaw.
Yeah, that, Mr. Chairman, that was my concern, is that although we passed it at town meeting, it hasn't went through the whole process with the Attorney General's office. But in keeping with the bylaw, I mean, I think it's a good compromise to wait to make sure that it does get approved. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. LaFond, would you recommend a motion to table, or would we just?
I would just withdraw it at the moment, or just pass over the...
I withdraw.
Okay. That's fine. It is withdrawn.
At such time that should the provision not be approved by the Attorney General, then I would be reappointing Mr. Mueller to the ZBA, and at that time, you would have the same authority to veto it if you chose. So, it will be, it will be in front of you again should the AG reject the vote at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. All right. Second is a contest by Ms. Bogart of Allen Jermaine to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, just like Mr. Belbin, my contesting this appointment is based on the bylaw. We've talked about...
Next up on the agenda is the contesting of two Town Administrator appointments. We'll take them individually. First is a contest by Mr. Belvin of Eric Mueller's appointment to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Mr. Chairman, shall I?
Ms. LaFond.
I did mention this to you, Bob, yesterday, that for the meantime, Mr. Mueller and I have had a conversation, and at the moment, we're going to forego that reappointment until such time that we get feedback or a decision from the Attorney General as to whether or not the recent bylaw regarding the permitting authorities and serving on more than one is upheld or rejected by the Attorney General. Should it be upheld, which I expect, then Mr. Mueller will not, will have to decide what board he chooses to be on. If it's not upheld by the Attorney General, then I've told Mr. Mueller that I would be more than happy to reappoint him to the ZBA. At that time, obviously, the board would have the same, the same legal authority if you choose. But that's the way I left it with, excuse me, with Mr. Mueller. Excuse me.
All right.
Nothing, no offense to you that I'm having trouble getting your name out, so. So that's the way we left it for now.
Okay.
That would be in good faith with where we stand tonight, because I assume Bob's concern was, was really one in terms of compliance with the bylaw.
Yeah, that, Mr. Chairman, that, that was my concern, is that although we passed it at town meeting, it hasn't went through the whole process with the Attorney General's office. But in keeping with the bylaw, I mean, I think it's a good compromise to wait to make sure that it does get approved. Thank you.
All right. So, Mr. LaFond, would you recommend a motion to table, or would we just?
I would just withdraw it at the moment, or just pass over the, the.
I withdraw.
Okay, that's fine. It is withdrawn.
At such time that should the, the provision not be approved by the Attorney General, then I would be reappointing Mr. Mueller to the ZBA, and at that time, you would have the same authority to veto it if you chose. So it will be, it will be in front of you again, should the AG reject the vote at town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. All right. Second is a contest by Ms. Bogart of Alan Germain to the Finance Committee.
Yeah, just like Mr. Belbin, my contesting this appointment is based on the bylaw. We've talked about the Finance Committee bylaw many, many times. This is not a surprise. When we started talking about, a long time ago, discussing committee memberships and restrictions and stuff, Ms. LaFond sought an opinion from KP Law, and Mr. Corbo, Attorney Corbo, wrote back and gave his opinion, I forget the date, that said a member of the Finance Committee cannot serve on another committee. He said, you know, ad hoc committees and informational ones would be okay.
I think before we discuss it, we should have a motion and a second to place it into discussion.
Oh, sure.
So, so is, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to, to contest the appointment of Alan Germain to the Finance Committee.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Bogart.
Okay, so, yeah, in a nutshell, when we started talking about that, KP Law gave their opinion and said that, and we all accepted it. And that was the first time Mr. LaFond used that term, path of least resistance, and as was communicated to me and I believe us multiple times, that there were two members of the Finance Committee that were to be affected by that, and that his plan was to allow them to continue to serve until their first term on either of those committees came up, at which point they would make a decision, which committee to serve on. And that is where we are right now, I believe. So I believe for Mr. Germain to be appointed or reappointed to the Finance Committee would be a direct violation of that bylaw. Whether we like the bylaw now, or we've changed our minds on it, in my opinion, doesn't matter. That's the way the bylaw stands right now.
Any other discussion? Ms. Ewens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, and I, I do understand where both Mr. Belbin and Mrs. Bogart are coming from, but my feeling was, even before Mr. LaFond told us about his discussion with you, Mr. Mueller, that I think both gentlemen have said they will step down. They'll pick one and then step down. And the bylaw is, is not in effect as we speak. It will be at one point, hopefully, November usually, I think, the AG's office gets to it. And so I think we should just, I personally think we should respect both of these gentlemen's statements, that they will choose one and, and step down from the rest. That's, I, I wrote that bylaw, Jen, so I, you know, and I did it for a good reason. But I think between now and whenever we hear from the AG, I think that we should take people at their word, that they're gonna, they're gonna back off.
May I?
Ms. Bogart.
I was referencing the, the Finance Committee bylaw that is intact today, not a permitting authority one or anything, the, the Finance Committee bylaw that is in effect right now.
Gotcha.
According to Attorney Corbo, would preclude Mr. Germain from serving on both the Finance Committee and the Conservation Commission at the same time.
And, and if I make, too, that when his term for conservation comes up, and, and that's really a legal question, I don't know what to do about that one, but I do know that we are the appointing authority for conservation. And so we can effectuate that non-appointment if we so choose, if, you know, when that term comes up.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hoffman.
I have two questions slash issues with this. First of all, the bylaw that we were, that we're talking about was, is very confusing. I think we all agreed that there was, it wasn't clear cut. We did ask Mr. Corbo for a clarification, and I think it was still a little bit fuzzy with everybody. And the reason I say that is because we looked to change the bylaw to make it pretty cut and dry. I know the original discussion was to have the same bylaw as the capital outlay, which basically said you could only serve on capital outlay, nothing else. Then we decided, well, through some discussion, that that probably was a little too harsh. We tried to massage it a little bit, and we didn't come to a clear cut decision in time for the last town meeting. I don't feel as though we should punish Mr. Germain for that. As, as everybody knows, it's tough to get people on committees. In fact, I think FinCom has two or three openings right now, correct if I'm wrong. So, I mean, I can see Jen's point, but also I can, you know, if, if it was a clear cut, no questions asked type bylaw, I would stand, I could stand behind that 100%, but I really can't. The other question I had was, last year, when Jen and I first came on board, I think the first meeting we had with the Select Board Appointments, and Mr. Germain was appointed and unanimously approved to be on the Conservation Committee, Commission, Commission, sorry, and he was already on the FinCom. So we approved it with the same bylaw in effect. I'm all about precedent, and we've, you know, we did that last year, and to not do it this year, I just think it sends a, a bad sign. I don't know, that's, you know, there's both sides to everything, but like I said, I, I just think that my main concern is this wasn't clear cut, and we all agreed, that's why we just tried to come up with a new bylaw.
Any other? Ms. Mr. LaFond.
I'm going to be the ultimate on the fence guy. I, I agree with everybody here. In, in my opinion, first of all, Jen and I have had this conversation, and I told her quite frankly, that I have complete respect for her perspective on this, and there'd be certainly no concern, no offense, nothing if she brought this to the board for a possible veto, because I can respect her opinion and I understand her opinion on the subject. My overall philosophy has been, you know, and I, I feel more confident about how clear the Finance Committee bylaw is myself than some. I do believe the intent is so that you are not supposed to serve on other boards and committees. That's what I believe the intent is. However, not everybody felt that way at a given point in time, and now we have the situation we have. So for me, it's a matter of how we, how do we in good faith get from one place to another? I do agree that even though the, the bylaw may be clear in my mind, if it's not clear in enough people's minds, then it's not clear enough. So I think it would help to fix that. The other piece of this is that if we are looking to comply with this bylaw, then I think it's a matter of how we do it. And I think there was one other is such situation, which is, we've cleared that up in good faith. There is a, this particular situation, taking names out of it. This will also take care of itself over some period of time, and I just think it's a matter of respecting people's service. And like I said, this, this will take care of itself in good faith, and I just don't know that, that that's the best way to do it, is to, is to veto appointments or, or effectively fire people from their, from their service to the town. But that being said, like I said, I am fairly, I'm not, I, I am fairly confident what the intent of that bylaw is, and I would completely agree with Jen on that point. To me, it's a matter of how you get from one point to another. And in the meantime, I know Mr. Chairman and I have discussed about possibly having a, you know, a, a small subcommittee to have something proposed at town meeting by this fall, so that this isn't an issue that's going to linger, we can deal with it, deal with it soon, to really clear this up to everybody's satisfaction. So to that extent, I do hope that you do, request that you don't veto this for the reasons I've stated. And any, any questions you have, I'd be happy to, happy to answer.
Mr. Belvin.
All right. So I think we're talking about 4.3.7, where it states in our current bylaw, "Any registered voter of a town, of the town shall be eligible for appointment to the Finance Committee or Council on Aging, except that no elected or appointed town officer or regular town employee or person holding a position of financial responsibility for the town shall be eligible for membership in such agency. No member of a special town committee shall be authorized to vote as a member of such agency on any matter pertaining to the duties of a special committee of which he is a member." So that's where the confusion, I think, lies, is that, what's a special committee? All right? That's just my opinion. And it needs to be cleared up. There is confusion there, because here we say you can't be, but if you're part of a special committee, technically, you're an officer of the town. I think that's what Town Council is kind of getting at.
I don't know if Council opined that a special committee would make you an officer of the town, because I believe, my recollection is that, his opinion was that if one serves in a role that is, that is governed by either state statute or town bylaw, that puts you, that makes you an officer of the town. Again, that's just a nutshell of what I heard from Mr. Corbo. I do believe that that second sentence is more confusing than the first one, though, Bob. I do agree with that. That could use some clarification, too.
And I think we need to work with the Finance Committee. And I just want to let people know that an email was sent out by Mr. Germain. I think we all got one, but just to let you, everyone, know that one was sent out to us. And I, I think that we should allow this to go on, and we work together with the Finance Committee to create a bylaw, and that's satisfactory.
I do think it's helpful to have a timeline on that.
Right.
I mean, because this, I don't believe this can linger. I think this has to be dealt with.
Most definitely.
Sooner rather than later.
That's my opinion.
So, so it's not on the agenda, so it's really not an item for discussion. But I, I think one of the ways, I think, this is a very confusing bylaw. To me, it's one of the most poorly written bylaws I've seen in quite some time. And I, I do think we need to find a, a common ground solution to this problem. And a, a proposal I'll be bringing to the board at a, at a future meeting, it's, it's not on the agenda tonight, but, so we can't discuss it. But I, I would suggest that we appoint a couple of members of the Select Board and ask the FinCom to appoint a couple of members to a, a joint working group, let's call it, to come together and to find, to find, craft a bylaw that we can all understand, that we won't need to call Town Council every time we want an opinion, we'll, we'll know what it says. And I, I think that's the way to craft all bylaws, by the way, that you, the average person can read them without having to call a lawyer to interpret it for us.
No, and, and I think, speaking to Mr. Holmes earlier today, I think, and I agree with his perspective, that what, rather than trying to clarify, figure out what the existing language means, and again, in good faith, I'm pretty clear on the intent. Okay, I don't want to sit on the fence on that one. But I think his perspective, I think, is interesting. Let's, rather than trying to interpret the current language, let's figure out what we want to be the case.
Exactly.
And then build a bylaw around that, rather than just trying to tweak the one we have to make it, to understand what we think it's supposed to mean. So I think that's a, that's a good perspective for us. Let's just define what we want, what we want to be the case, and then we can put language to that.
I agree. Is there any further? Ms. Bogart.
Well, that's where that whole thing started, when I brought it back, brought it up back in the day, was to look at all of the committees and the membership, and to have that discussion of, of what works and what, what doesn't. So I raised that exact idea a while ago, and my contesting this is nothing to do with firing someone from their position, which is the term that you just used. If reappointing or making this appointment would directly dismiss what Attorney Corbo told us, and would, in that effect, go against the bylaw as written. So if, if you guys want to dismiss what Attorney Corbo said, that's, that's on you, in my opinion. It's a, it's a violation of the current bylaw.
Any further discussion?
Well.
Ms. Ms. Ewens.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I mean, my, my position is I don't know when Mr. Germain's Conservation Commission, it's coming up in two years. My feeling is at between now and November, we'll find out if the AG's office has accepted our bylaw. If they have, then Mr. Germain will have to leave the Conservation Commission.
Different bylaw.
Excuse me?
It's a different bylaw.
Oh, that's right. Okay, well, at any rate, he will have to leave the Conservation Committee. I know it's not the Finance Committee bylaw, but it's the other bylaw about membership on two different appointing authorities.
Permitting authorities.
Excuse me?
Talking about Mr. Mueller's appointment.
Yeah. I thought we were talking about Mr. Germain's appointment now.
No, but.
We, we are talking about Mr. Germain's appointment.
Yeah, the question about multiple permitting authorities, that's.
Well, I thought we had moved on from Mr. Mueller.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The same applies for Mr. Germain, though. So, anyway, that's just my, my take on that.
Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor of Ms. Ms. Bogart's motion to veto Mr. Germain's appointment to the FinCom? Please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No.
No.
It's four to one against. All right. Moving on, a discussion and possible vote on an increase in the KP Law rate from, of $10, from $1.95, $1.95, $195 an hour, to $205 an hour. Wishful thinking.
That's playing hardball. That's playing a real hardball.
Mr. LaFond, is this something we need a vote on? This is more of an informative item, isn't it?
I, I would agree, yes. This is here because Elaine told me that historically, that this was put before the board in some format, but I agree, it doesn't necessarily need a vote of the board. So again, we're just trying to go along with what the history has been, I think, in the future. Perhaps it's just, again, a memo to the board, or their letter to us. So it's, it's more informational than anything else.
Okay. Mr. Belvin.
Yeah, it says discussion and vote, so for the discussion purposes, do we have a set contract with Copman and Page?
No, there's not, there's not a contract, no.
So we have no contract with them at all?
No, you have an, you have an hourly rate. That's what you have, yes.
We have an hourly rate?
Correct.
I think, I've put this in the past, and I think we should do it again, that we look at other opportunities for council for the Town of Carver.
And, Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, but that's not on the agenda.
I, I, I agree, Ms. Ewens. I'm sorry, Mr. Belvin.
I want to make sure the public understands that we don't have a contract with them. Okay? They're, they can increase their rates, and it seems like they increased it when I first came in, to office. So.
Correct me if I'm wrong, though, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Bob, but there was no rate increase last year, was there?
No.
No.
It was the only year.
It was one the year before. My first year I was here, they increased their rates. And now they're increasing it again. And $10 doesn't sound like a lot, but you compare it to how much is actually done and sent to council, it can get up there. So we have to be aware of that, and I think that's something we have to be just cognitive on in the future, that there could be other options.
Okay. Any other discussion? What's the pleasure of the board? Would you like, we probably should consider taking a, a vote on this, I think, just to, just to confirm. So is there a motion to? Yeah, Mr. Hoffman.
Quick question first. If we take, if it's, let's say that we voted no, they're still going to give us the increase, correct?
I believe so.
Right.
Which is, which is why I wondered whether we needed a vote.
That's the perspective we've been lacking so far.
So the rate's going up.
Unless we can get them to go back to $1.95, like I, when I started.
I'll make that motion. I just question if we really need to take a vote.
Yeah, and I, and I question that as well.
I would agree. I, you do not need to. I just know that historically, Elaine has told me that it's put before the board in this fashion, and it's somewhat of a ministerial act. And again, in the future, I guess that would be just a conversation between the office and whoever the chair is to make a decision what to do going forward, so. So no, there isn't any reason for a vote unless, again.
Okay. I don't.
Ministerial on your part.
Was it voted on in the past, so I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Yes.
Was it, it was voted on in the past when there was an increase?
Yes.
I think so, yeah. Just to sort of, I think it was more of acknowledgement, correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Ewens, more of acknowledgement that we were, we were aware of it, correct?
Ms. Ewens.
Ms. Ewens, yeah.
Mrs. Ewens was my mother.
I'm sorry, Ms. Ewens.
No, I think there was a, I think, I remember there being a direct vote. I think it was the first year that Bob came, and I think we had done it previously, too. But it, it hasn't, it, it doesn't raise, they don't raise it every year. It's my, that's my recollection.
Yes, I believe you're correct. I don't believe there was an increase last year.
They do? Oh, okay.
They didn't raise it in 20.
2020 was the only year they didn't.
Oh, okay.
They normally raise it every year.
That must be the one I'm thinking of. Okay.
Yeah, it's, it's, historically, it's been $5 an hour.
That's, that's what I thought. It was usually very minimal.
Now, is there a motion to accept the, the rate increase from 1.95 to 2.05?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I, I just, I kind of reject this. I think that we have to look at other options.
Well, but that's sort of a separate issue, is right now, Copman and Page are our attorneys, and this is what they charge. So, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of accepting the rate increase from 1.95 to 2.05? Aye. Opposed?
No.
I'm going to abstain. If this vote is just kind of a ministerial one, then I'm, then I'm not going to vote on it.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hewens, were you an aye?
Yes.
So, so three to one to one. Right. The next item on our agenda is an appointment of the Select Board Representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board. I am the current representative to the Plymouth County Advisory Board, and should the Board care to keep me in that role, I am, I am willing to serve.
I make a motion, we reappoint Mark Townsend to serve as a Select Board Representative to Plymouth County Advisory Board.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? It is unanimous. Let's see, we are moving along at a brisk rate here. It's 6:51. The next item on our agenda is a poll hearing that is scheduled for 7:15, so I think we should keep that at 7:15. So, if there's no, with the Board's approval, I would move along to the next item on the agenda, which is the discussion, the 7:20 item, discussion, possible vote on moving the start time of Select Board meetings to 6:00 PM. Any, any objection from the Board? Seeing none. So, the reason I, I bring this up and asked for it to be on the agenda is I have had discussion with a number of members of the public who, now that we are back in post-COVID meetings and people can attend, some of our meetings tend to run pretty late, and I think some people thought it might be easier for them to attend the entire meeting if we started at 6:00 rather than, rather than 7:00. So, rather than just making a decision, I thought I would put it out for the Board for your consideration. So, I guess I'd start, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second discussion? Seeing none.
Everybody's good with that?
All in favor of, of changing the start time of our Select Board meetings to 6:00 PM?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Moving on, I would, I would really like to keep as much as possible the entire discussion of the Screening Committee, and we have a number of items that are related together. So, possibly, we could move on to the 8:30 PM item, if the Select Board doesn't object, which is best basically an announcement we discussed previously, and we discussed our Select Board goals and objectives. And I would just like to ask all the Select Board members to, they have up to three goals or objectives, get those to Ms. Weston by June 15th. The Town Administrator will be coordinating a date with a facilitator, and we'll get those on the agenda, on the agenda for the date with the facilitator. And then, moving forward again, I guess I would ask Mr. LaFond to go into his Town Administrator update, but I don't see Mr. LaFond. Ms. Weston, thank you. Could you see if you could?
Sorry about that. How do you, are you almost done with the agenda, Mr. Chair?
We are moving at a brisk pace, Mr. LaFond.
I am impressed.
So, I know it's a little out of, out of order here, but if you could provide us with your Town Administrator update.
Yes, moving ahead, I'll skip number one for, for now, but as we have on the agenda, actually Elaine was nice enough to just type it right in there, that the water line, it has begun, finally has begun. Dig Safe has marked the roads, the trench markings are done, and the digging will be starting, I'm sorry, I have a tough time reading this, starting as early as...
It's all right. We are, we are way ahead of time here, Mr. LaFond.
Yeah, no, okay. Yes, the digging should be starting this coming week, and it's supposed to be six weeks. On the other hand, we have been informed that by our health agent that it's likely, that's a very generous timeframe that we're working within, so hopefully it will be three to four weeks, depending on weather. So, so we are ahead of schedule. Obviously, the, there was a little bit of a question as to the, the contract being signed in a timely manner, but that, that was all taken care of, and obviously with the guidance of KP law. So, we are, we are on track with that and keeping our friends at DEP updated as well, so.
So, a quick question, question on that?
Sure.
Have, have the residents been contacted as far as if they're going to hook up?
Yes, they have, they have been all contacted by the health agent personally, and he has also been in contact with DEP for the purposes of having a gathering, if people so choose to appear, or some sort of Zoom meeting with, with DEP to also have, get some input from them. The issue here, obviously, is, is to what extent, the word compel may not be the best word, but obviously the goal is to have all of these homes or properties hook in now. The Town will not be intending to pay for hookups after this project is completed. Whether or not DEP is going to take any action, either through the Board of Health to try to compel action to have these homes hooked up, we don't know that yet. That's something that, that the DEP, our contact there, has speculated may be the case. I think the problem obviously becomes from a homeowner, you know, you don't know in five, 10 years if there's going to be additional fallout from, from the current situation, the current leech that's causing this problem. So, if you don't tie in now, and your well ultimately has some sort of impact, well, well, what then? What then? So, I think it, people will be greatly encouraged to tie in at this time, at the, on the Town's, at the Town's dime, so to speak, and Kevin has, has been contacting each of them one, one at a time initially. So, so that's very hands-on, boots on the ground, so.
Thank you.
As far as the open space and recreation plan update, and I'll add, certainly invite Sarah to contribute to this, too. One of the key components, initial components, is for the Town to form a committee to oversee this project. We have, I have put out a call to various individuals, actually various committees for representation. That would include earth removal, conservation, park and recreation, cranberry, cranberry grower, who else?
Agricultural Commission.
Agricultural Commission.
Select Board member, and...
So, the response has been pretty good. People are still waiting for some confirmation from two of them, but this, this is the, kind of the, this launches the project, so to speak. We do have agreement in place with Serpide to facilitate this and effectively write and complete the report. I think one of the, one of the issues that had, it's not an issue, one of the questions that had come up is to what extent we were looking for Serpide to conduct the, the survey that's necessary at the front end of the project. And I think, well, the consensus so far is, is that that's not something that we would necessarily need Serpide to do. It could be done in-house. So, Sarah, you want to comment on that specifically?
Sure, thank you. Yeah, typically, this was something that was done in-house when, when I was the Conservation Agent. So, at the time, it was usually Conservation, other Conservation Commission members and myself who did the survey, but this is a much larger group of people, and I think that's a good thing, that we're getting it from various Boards and Committees. So, hopefully, some of those members will step up and help us. It's a pretty tedious, it's a task of, of accounting, and, but I think it's something that can be done. The, the really difficult stuff is, is summarizing all of that and putting it together into a narrative, and I think that's one of the reasons, that's one of the things Serpide's good at doing, so.
And moving on, building property update, 44 Lakeview Street. It had been suggested by members of this Board, in fact, I think it was the day we did a site visit down there, Jim, Mark, and I think Sarah was there, too, that we had a proposal with, as you know, with Rec, the Rec Committee to put pickleball courts down at the Senior Center, which still would seem to be a good viable idea. However, the thought at that time was, you know, considering that we have a lot next door, it would make sense for, for a small group of people to actually look at the property as a whole, just to determine if there's other opportunities that we may want to be seeking. I have spoken to a member of the Senior COA and a member of the Recreation Committee, I've drafted Mary Ross, whether she likes it or not, but she's been very, she'll be very amenable, as well as Connie Kelly would be, Connie Kelly, right?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I get my, get my last names mixed up sometimes, as well as a member of the COA, Savory Moore, who was involved in, you know, heavily involved in the purchase to begin with. So, so it's certainly a member of this Board, if somebody would wish to contribute to that. And that would be more of an informal role of just, you know, doing some brainstorming, maybe doing some analysis of the property a little bit, a little more in-depth analysis with the assessor as an engineer. And it probably won't upset the current goal of having pickleball down there, but I, I think there was some sense that we need to at least have a look at it, just from being responsible. So, so I do have some, some interest from some of the parties, and again, if any member of this Board wishes to kind of...
Ms. Hewens.
Lead that effort, I will not be, I will not be bashful of letting someone else do that.
So, thank you, Mr. Chair. I, I was just going to say that I, you know, as the former Conservation Agent, I, I would really like to be on, in that informal group, just because that property we bought next to the COA is supposed to be for, just for conservation, but I don't think it's my role to lead that. I'm happy to do that, but...
You're going to pass the buck right back to me, Sarah?
Yeah.
Fair enough. So, that's something you could probably look forward to this coming week, because now, as of last week, I did meet with the Rec Committee, and they completely, my concern is that they put a lot of time, effort, and energy into considering and advocating for, you know, pickleball, which, again, I'm a huge proponent of, but my concern was to what extent the, that the efforts of these people, how they would feel if this would seem to be put on the shelf for a little bit, but that, that's not the case, and I think there's a, there's an understanding of, you know, there's perhaps an even larger opportunity down there for, for recreation beyond pickleball. So, I was not surprised, but, but pleased to be able to meet with them and have that conversation.
Okay, and I guess my only question on that is, the informal group you're putting together, it's obviously, appointing a representative from the Select Board is not on the agenda for this evening.
No.
So, you know, I, I don't know if there are any other members of the Board who would be interested, and if there are, perhaps we need to schedule a vote at a future meeting for that. Otherwise, are there, are there any other members of the Board who are interested?
Well, I guess, could, could others of us kind of attend some of the meetings? Like, that's something that I'd definitely be interested in being a part of with my history on, you know, the Bike Path Committee, the Recreation Committee, and just my general enthusiasm for potential on that property. If Sarah were to be, you know, the Select Board rep, would, would I still be able to go to the meetings or participate or submit ideas?
Sure, anyone can do that, yes. I mean, obviously, there's a, there's a line there between acting in your capacity as a member of the Select Board versus acting just as an interested citizen, but that would certainly be acceptable. Now, obviously, if the Board appoints some sort of subcommittee, well, now we're into a different situation, and as you probably recall from our meeting with Town Council about subcommittees, subcommittee meetings also have to be posted.
Yes, they do.
Which, not that that's a problem, but we just have to be cognizant of that.
So, I guess my question here is, are you looking to try to put together some type of ad hoc committee, or are you just looking for a, a, a small working group to...
I think that would be a better, better way to state.
Okay.
Put it, right? And again, any of those activities can certainly be, the Board can be informed of, so people could participate as they...
Okay.
As they wish to.
It doesn't sound like it's something we really need a vote on, then.
No, again, unless, unless you did want to, you know, form a, if you wanted to create a formal committee and with formal membership, but short of that, I, you know, this is just an update to the, to the Board. If the Board wishes to deal with it in a, in a different fashion...
Okay.
Let me know.
That's fine. All right.
And Old Home Day, which missed it last year, and I think we all have a sense of loss from that last year. But as, I will just read to you what, what Elaine has very capably inserted here into the agenda. Old Home Day will be taking place with modifications according to the Governor's Orders, including the car show, craft booths, activities for children, and a modified road race. The Old Home Day Committee is taking a vote on June 1 on whether or not to have the actual clambake, and what did they do?
It's June 1 tonight.
It's June 1 tonight, okay.
Oh, okay.
I was, I was just, I was just testing. CARES Act update. We are still waiting for response from the county on our fourth. We have three, as you know, already received. We are still waiting on the fourth and beyond. There's one for about $313,000. That's really the, the most substantial one out there. We do have, the capacity we have, we're holding off on submitting some, some materials and supplies that the school is seeking. We do have an informal estimate now on this building. As I mentioned, we were looking to try and replace, update some of the HVAC and ventilation systems in this building that otherwise we wouldn't be doing right now, and that's, the estimate is about $95,000. So, so we're, we're trying to keep our, you know, it's, it's, it's June, June 1, I might add, and so we still have about seven months, so we want to be a little bit careful, because it'd be very easy to eat up that capacity. On another, I just, just printed it out, we just got a DOR advisory today about the ARIFunds and how to apply for those, but that does not necessarily give guidance as to whether or not it's going to, how it's going to be administered. So, it's still a little, little premature for me to report to that, to report on that this evening. I do know Meg has, in her conversations, conversations with some of her peer, peer group, there's some talk that it may be a situation where it may be helpful for communities to get together perhaps and hire a consultant on a regional basis, because this is going to be very complicated, and if funds aren't spent in a manner as yet undefined by the, by the feds, and a matter that isn't exactly in line with what the requirements are, the cities and towns can really be on the hook for some, for some reimbursements to the federal government. So, we have to be very careful with it.
So, have we gotten any guidance from the county as to whether they're going to be accepting the ARIFunds or not administering them?
I, I haven't heard anything from the county that they've, that they've made that decision. I will say, though, that when the, there was a publication not that long ago with the funds that were dedicated to each community, and the Plymouth County communities were not part of that, which gave my first a quick, you know, made the heart stop quickly, and then you realize that, well, it's the Plymouth County communities that are, that are listed. So, so there's reason to believe that the county is going to be doing that on behalf of, of cities and towns in the county, but that, that we've not had confirmation of that just yet.
Okay. Moving along, on the end of our agenda here, minutes licensed and topics not recently anticipated by the Chair, 48 hours in advance of the meeting. Our next meeting will be June 15, 2021, at 6:00 PM. The minutes of May 18, 2021. Is there a, is there a motion?
Can I ask that they be tabled, because I've not given them a thorough look that they deserve?
Sure, we have a motion to table the minutes of May 18. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. A discussion? All in favor of tabling those minutes?
Aye.
Thank you.
My pleasure. It is unanimous. Let's see, we have a request for the bike race Harvest Triathlon on June 12, 2021, from 7:00 AM to 10:30 AM. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the request?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion?
Just for a point of order, in their application, they say several times that they'll need a police detail at Cranberry Road and Federal Furnace Road. That intersection doesn't exist. I'm assuming they mean Cranberry Road and Federal Road, but someone might want to just kind of reach out and make sure that's what they're talking about.
Mr. LaFond, can you...
The police chief has signed off on it.
Okay.
He has been in discussions with them, so he...
Yeah, I...
We'll clarify.
Just a... Just a, probably an innocent typo, but Federal Furnace is in Plymouth and Federals in Cranberry, so.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. We have a request for one day special license for the St. John's Club on June 23 and June 24. So I would assume those are two, a request for two one-day special licenses, on June 23 and June 24, from noon to 11:00 PM. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It is unanimous. It is 7:10. Why don't we take a five-minute break, come back at 7:15 for our public hearing. At this time, I would entertain a motion to open a public hearing. It's a poll hearing with N-Star and Verizon for Indian Street, six new polls.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to open the public hearing. Discussion? Seeing none.
I am here.
You the representative from N-Star?
EverSource, yes.
Wonderful. EverSource, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Please step up to the microphone.
Hi, my name's Karen Johnson. I'm here on behalf of EverSource.
If you could do-
Could you just a little closer to the microphone, if you could?
Thank you.
We're here to petition for six polls on Indian Street, and that is for two new electric services at that location.
Is that, that's it?
Well, this is kind of my first time, so-
Okay.
Yes, if you need more, you can prompt me along.
Are there any members of the public that are here to speak to this? Seeing none. Questions from the board? Ms. Hewens?
Thank you for coming here tonight. My only question is, and I ask it every time, is, were all the abutters notified?
All the abutters were notified.
Thank you very much.
Yes.
Ms. Bogart?
Why can't you continue the underground service that services the homes to the east of the new homes being constructed, instead of putting up the new poles that are being proposed to the west? Because that'll eliminate a lot of necessary tree clearing. Because I drove by there, and the one house that I see currently built, you can actually see a house with underground service already there.
Well, when there's underground service, it has to be something from a pole that supports it from overhead, somewhere.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you just speak a little closer to the microphone? I'm sorry, thank you.
Yes, so there has to be a pole, that the poles have to be somewhere to connect to the underground.
Right. It looked like the power goes underground around House Number 17, Indian, and then continues underground to serve houses to the west of it. And I forget the last one that's numbered, but the underground service stops at this one house, and then you can see one of the new houses being constructed.
Right.
So I just wanted to know why the underground service can't continue from that side.
Well, I'm not sure. Do you, the contractor's here, do you know why they chose to install the six poles? They are actually going from the handhold to underground, but the poles are going in, yes.
My name's Demetrius Hasiotis. I'm the developer, builder. I own Hickory Hill Development. I believe when engineering came out, we looked at trying to go underground. So if you're coming down Indian Street heading towards 58, the new house being constructed is on the right. So the house, the next house you see on the left, the underground actually goes back further towards 58. And I believe where that underground ties in, you can't add any other services to where that is. That's a very non-technical description. But I was told, the engineer that came out, this was, I guess, their preferred way to bring power to those two houses.
I'd like to know if that's actually true. I know you were honest and said you didn't have the technical term.
Sure.
But coming underground from that direction, in my opinion, would be much more favorable, again, to limit the amount of tree clearing, because it is so, it's in eyesight. So I would love to know what it was about that, that you cannot extend it, because I've never heard that before.
Okay.
Well, I can certainly- Certainly ask and get back to you, because I don't have the answer tonight.
Neither do I.
Okay.
Mr. Belvin?
My question was, when I saw the advertisement in the newspaper, it said the location was going to be the high school. And I understand that was a prior poll hearing that we had was at the high school. And I know we put a location change out there. Did all the abutters get the location change sent out? Okay. And was there a notice put at the school saying that it was changed to here?
Yep, the secretary emailed me stating she put the notice out, and the abutters were called and hand-delivered if we couldn't reach them. And we also mailed it.
Okay. I just want to make sure that the public understands that there was an error. We fixed the error as much as we could, for the public to know that this is going on. Otherwise, I have no more questions.
Any other discussion? Seeing none. Is there a motion?
Make a motion we approve, contingent on getting some information that-
Yeah, I would just like a follow-up to why couldn't the power extend further underground? There may be a viable reason.
Mr. LaFawn, can we make a contingent approval on this?
I think you have to continue the hearing.
I would think so, yeah.
If it's just a matter of approving it, approving it and receiving additional information that's not, that's just informational only, but not pertinent to your decision, that's one thing. But if it's, you know, and again, I don't want to put words in your mouth, Jen, but if the goal is to receive further information for you to be willing, able to make a decision, then I think you do have to continue the hearing.
That was my thought.
Mr. Belvin, do you want to-
I'll take my motion back, and we'll continue the hearing until we get that information.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor. Do we, Mr. LaFawn, do we have to set a date for the continuance?
Yes.
So do we have time to get that for 6:15?
6:15, yep.
Okay. So, Mr. Belvin, are you willing to amend your motion to continue to 6:15?
Continue to the 16th, that-
The 15th.
The 15th, that's 6:15.
Okay.
So June 15 at 6:15. I just want to make sure they hear it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
No, you can't. You're continuing.
Oh, that's, exactly. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Hewens.
You're welcome.
He was just testing you.
Yeah, right.
And you passed.
Keep me on my toes. All right. So now, moving along, we get to a number of discussions on the Town Administrator Screening Committee. And the first item is the discussion and possible vote on the at-large appointments to the Town Administrator Screening Committee. There are a number of ways we could do this, and I know there's been some different discussions. And I had one proposal I wanted to put forward myself, that sort of brought together a couple of different thoughts. And we could talk about it as a board, but we have a number of qualified applicants, but obviously, we can only appoint three. So I think we need to find a way to condense the pool a little bit, so that we can discuss them. And I thought perhaps one way we could do that is we could go around the room, each one of us could present one applicant that we thought was well-qualified and why. And then we could go to, say, a ranked choice voting on the three people, where perhaps we, our number one choice gets three points, our number two gets two, and our number one gets one. And at the end, we could add up their points and see who the three applicants are. We could certainly do it a different way, and I'm willing to listen to proposals from the board on how we choose these folks. Mr. Belvin?
Can we just review who are the appointees from the FinCom Planning School?
Sure. Sure. Yep. So the appointment from the FinCom is Mr. Germain. The appointment from the school is Jen Pratt. And I haven't been informed who the appointment from the planning board is.
I believe it's Bruce.
Oh, Bruce Mackey?
Yes.
Okay. So those are the-
And we have Mike and Tom.
Yes.
From Public Safety.
Yes. So I believe the only person that would come off the list that you have in front of you, well, Mr. Germain's not even on the list anymore. So those are the three appointments that we have already. So any thoughts on how we should choose? Yes, Ms. Bogart?
So the ranked choice voting, that was, you know, big in the state last year. So are you proposing that we each propose a candidate that we feel strongly about, and then three of them will be chosen as the members?
I'm proposing that we go around the room, each one of us choose one person. I mean, you may have chosen somebody that somebody already spoke about, so you may pick somebody else. But each one of us present one person that we feel strongly would be qualified for the screening committee. And then after we've done that, we each announce our three candidates. Our number one, which will get three points, our number two, which will get two points, and our number one, which will get one point.
Yeah, our number three.
Yep.
Of those five people only? Like, there would be no discussion of any of the other candidates?
Yes, I would think of those five. Well, no, I mean, I think you could pick any three you want. But I'm just, I think if we try to discuss each one of the candidates, we're going to be here for a long time. So, Mr. Belvin?
You keep saying three. We, FinCom Planning School, two Public Safety, that's five.
Right.
And we said we're going to have nine, with one has to be a business.
Yes. We've already chosen five. We're going to get three at-large tonight. That'll be eight. And then one, then another item on our agenda is a discussion of the business appointee.
Okay. I thought they were all together, but that's fine, no problem.
That's second. The business appointee could be someone from this list, or it could be someone, someone totally different. And again, if somebody has another way that they'd like to discuss choosing, Ms. Hewens. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So if, I think it might be important for us to take one of these items out of order before we're choosing our candidates. And that is the 7:55 PM discussion and possible vote about the conflict with having a town employee whose position is appointed by the TA to serve in a capacity as this, a member of this committee, whereby the town employee's role is to recommend his or her future employer appointing authority.
I have no objection to taking that out of order. Is there any objection from anyone else? Okay. Why don't we take the 7:55 item first? And I believe that was, you proposed that, Ms. Hewens, so why don't we-
I did, yes. And the reason I did, and of course, you know, we didn't know who was going to be applying to this committee at all. And I recall, I guess my point is that I recall being a town employee when we got the previous town administrator. And I was told by the Ethics Commission that as an employee, I could have nothing to do with his or her appointment. Also, as an employee, when Rick was still here the first time, I was not allowed to evaluate him as an employee, because I was his boss, but he was my boss. And so, so I'm just concerned, because I have found out that, some of you may already knew this, but I found out that Jennifer Galant is an employee in EMS department. And I think the same goes for Chief Ryan, who is a full-time employee. And I think, you know, I mean, I don't know whose call this is, but I think to me, it's an ethics issue. And it makes me very uncomfortable to have someone who, you know, will be essentially picking his or her future employer.
Okay. Mr. LaFawn, do you have anything to add here?
I think it would be-
Mr. Belvin?
I'm being careful, but, you know, because I have obviously, you know, tremendous respect for Mike Ryan, and I don't know Jennifer Galant.
Oh, this is nothing personal.
No, she's extremely well-regarded, but as, from an organizational standpoint, yeah, I personally don't think it's a good model. But again, I'm also being cautious as to what my role is at this stage, too.
Well, I guess there are a couple of different discussions here and thoughts that I have. First of all, at a previous board meeting, we voted to have the public safety chiefs select two people. They chose Chief Ryan and, I'm sorry, Mr. Walsh.
And we appoint the emergency management director, Mr. Walsh.
That's right. I guess my-
As we do the fire chief.
My point here is that there's nothing on this agenda that indicates a rediscussion of the chief's appointments and how-
No, but it does say having a town employee on this committee. And that would include, I mean, I wasn't here to name names.
No, I understand.
I have great respect for these people in these positions.
I'm just trying to think of the best way for us, if that is an ethics issue, to communicate to them that they probably should choose somebody else. We certainly don't want anyone having an ethics violation. So-
I think that's what we could do. I think we have every right to do that, so.
Okay. Could we, any further thoughts from the board, any?
Just a question. What is Ms. Galant's role? I was unaware that she was a town employee.
I think she's the assistant deputy director of the EMS department.
Okay.
Mr. Hopman?
My question is, the public safety departments, the person they recommend couldn't be employed by their departments, correct? So there couldn't be a fireman, a policeman?
No, the issue is the appointing authority. So out of the four, three of them are appointed by the select board. And so those four, so just pick, I'll just pick on the emergency management director, Tom Walsh. In his role on this TS, this Town Administrator Screening Committee, he's not picking his boss, because he's appointed by this board. So that's not a conflict.
So basically, I mean, we're talking about the police chief, the fire chief, and Mr. Walsh's position.
Correct.
So two of those three should be-
To be honest, I, you know, when we were selecting the four, I just didn't think of this, and I'm sure they probably didn't either.
Right.
But looking, thinking about it afterwards, I remembered the definite advice I got from ethics. I just-
So just so I'm clear, so to fill the two positions that we were looking for, it would have to come from the police, from the police chief, the fire chief, and Mr. Walsh's position. I'm sorry, I forget what the official title is.
Emergency management director.
Emergency management director.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. So there'd have to be two of those three?
Yes.
Okay.
Any further, Ms. Belvin?
Yeah. When I was going through the applicants, and I turned around and did my little first check-offs of people and listening to what they had said, and it does, I'm not going to beat around the bush, it concerns me that the town employees and family of town employees are on the list, some who have a good relationship with the existing, right, intern town administrator. So I mean, I, it's really difficult to keep personalities out of these, and I tried to the best I could. And I, if, we need to make sure that everything is fair, and we don't want to put people in jeopardy.
But if I could, Mr. Belvin, I think that's more of a discussion for the three at-large candidates. Right now, what we're discussing is just that one, that one item about the town employee's role and whether we should have, um-
Well, I guess that would-
We still have town employees that are on the list.
But, if I may, Mr. Chair, to that point, I'm not talking about volunteers like Mr. Holmes or-
I'm not either.
You know, I'm talking about employees.
Who are appointed by the town administrator.
Correct. That's all I'm talking about.
The last one here on the list.
And I think what perhaps might be, so, Ms. Hewens, do you have direct guidance from ethics on this, or is this just something you'd like us to look into?
You can call Ethics Commission yourself, or anyone can do that. I was looking through my old emails, and they go back a long way, so I wasn't able to find it. But I mean, they have a lawyer of the day, and it's free, so you can give them a call, or anyone, you know, can give them a call and find out. But I did get, I did get that guidance directly from them.
Okay. Is this something, because I'm out of town after tonight for the next week, is this something that perhaps you and Ms. Western could get together on and just communicate- And just communicate to the Public Safety Chiefs? Certainly, we don't want anyone to put themselves in a situation where they have a possible ethics violation. That's the last thing we want.
That was what I was worried about.
Is that something that you could perhaps look into and communicate to those folks?
Ms. Weston's willing to work with me.
And if subsequently, there's a change in their recommendations as to who they want in the screening committee, if someone could just send an email to the board?
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, and so, getting back to our discussion on how we should select the three at-large appointments. Does anyone have any further thoughts on that? It's obviously a difficult discussion. There's a lot of well-qualified candidates here, but we can only pick three. Mr. Hoffman?
Instead of all of us talking about one candidate, can we talk about three? Because if we do one, even if we all pick separate ones, that's five. And if the five weren't, one of the five weren't in my top three, like Jen had said, are we limited by, can we only deal with those five? Or we might bring up some points that other people might not have thought of?
Yeah, we can certainly do that. Are you okay with the type of ranked choice voting at the end? Or would you prefer something different there?
I think that's probably the best way to rank, because otherwise we could have, we could be here all night trying to figure it out.
And is that something, is everyone okay with that particular way of choosing them? The ranked choice at the end? Everyone's okay with that? Okay, and everyone's okay with discussing three applicants?
I have my three.
Okay, why don't we move forward? Ms. Hewens, would you like to begin?
Sure. I, there are some very qualified people here, as you said, Mr. Chair. I would like to see people who have some financial experience and also who have some experience understanding how Carver works. Because I think whoever we choose for the permanent town administrator has to understand that. We're very different from a lot of towns, particularly the way our public safety departments work. And so my first three, I was going to choose Patrick Mahar. He's not only worked for the town of Carver, but for many, many other towns. So he did say he could be objective when it came to his, if Mr. LaFawn was on the final committee. I'd also like to choose Mary Ross. She has been working for and with and as a volunteer in the town for many, many years. And I, it's hard, I really have four.
It's very hard.
So, but my third, at this point, is going to be Kevin Tracy for the same reason. I think that he's been, he gets how Carver works. And I think he'd be very objective, as would Mrs. Ross.
Who would like to go next? Anyone? Mr. Hoffman?
Sure. Okay, as Sarah just said, this is a tough decision. There's, everybody was a great candidate. And first of all, I want to thank everybody for applying for this. It's not easy to put yourself out there, and especially when they all had to come before us for an interview. And I think we caught a few of them off guard, so it's, I want to commend them for coming before the board for that. I tried to look for a cross-section of demographics. A lot of the candidates have been around the town for a while. Wanted to try to have some people that have been well-established. Some people that are relatively younger, and then obviously experienced in all three. So the three people that I wanted to, my choices were, first was Adam Holmes. Couple of things I liked, younger guy, involved in the town with the Fincom, youth sports. Was involved in the new school building committee. I know whenever I would see one of those meetings, he was always attending. So again, someone that's a little bit younger, that was definitely involved in the town and wants to continue. My second is Mary Ross, just what Sarah had said. She's been between teaching and recreation, and she started the ski program and all that. Very concerned person in the town. And that's what we need, someone that is not afraid to get involved and has been around and served under town administrators and even before the town administrators. She saw how the government, town government was run. And then my last person was Peggy Wood, Margaret Wood. And I kind of forgot, when she wasn't here for the interview, it was kind of one of those out of sight, out of mind type things. But then when I reread all the letters and looked at the qualifications, I mean, there's someone that's been around, again, been around for a while. She's been with the Fincom, GATRA Bus Dispatcher presently, Housing Authority. And I just remember always seeing her around town and involved in different things. I know she was a liaison, like she said here, with Fincom and the Police Department, Fire Department, EMS. So I think she has a good perspective on all the different boards and committees in town. So those were my three.
Ms. Bogart?
Okay, I would start with, I didn't have a speech prepared. Paul Kelly really struck me as someone that would be an asset to the committee. He's well-spoken, he was very respectful. I did work with him on the Master Plan Committee alongside him. And he was such an asset to that committee, and I saw how well he worked with a large group of diverse people. So I would think he would be a great member of the committee. I agree with Sarah about Kevin Tracy. I actually didn't know how we were going to choose the business member because I thought he'd be great for that, too, since he's a local business owner. So I thought he would be great. And then my third, because again, this was super hard. Jim Nowan struck me because of his history with the town. And he seemed really passionate for the position when he was here, too. He seemed to really want to be on the committee. So I guess if I had to kind of put three out there, it would be that. But if I had to stump for one, if we were only presenting one, I would really push for Paul Kelly.
Mr. Belvin?
I just want one question first. Is Peg Wood a town employee or is she a GATRA employee?
She's a GATRA employee.
She's a GATRA? Then I apologize about that, Peg. So my three are going to be Peg Wood, Paul Kelly, and Adam Holmes.
Do you want to speak to those choices, or just?
No, they stand on their own merits.
Okay. And, sorry, my three choices, I'm just going to speak for a minute. One of my choices was Peggy Wood. And I felt bad that she wasn't able to attend the interviews because I think she brings an awful lot, or would bring an awful lot, to the screening committee. She's worked at the COA, she's been on the Fincom, she was on the Fincom for quite a while. Not only was she on the Fincom, but she was a Fincom liaison to the Fire Department, the Police Department, a number of different departments within the town, which I think really gives her a broad look at what a town administrator does. So I felt bad that she wasn't able to come to the interviews because I thought that would have helped her. My other two, and I'll let them stand on their own, were Adam Holmes and Mary Ross. So with that being said, would anyone like to add anything before we go to voting?
I'm just trying to, how many of each ones-
That's fine.
-got for votes, basically?
That's fine. So Ms. Weston, are you ready to do this? So I'll start off, if the board doesn't mind. I would give Peggy Wood my three points, Adam Holmes, two, and Mary Ross, one. And Sarah, Ms. Hewens, would you be willing to go next?
Sure. I would give Peggy Wood my three points, Mary Ross, two, and, sorry, Paul Kelly, one.
Mr. Hoffman? I'm sorry, Ms. Weston, are you?
One of your three was Kevin Tracy, but you're saying you're giving Paul Kelly one.
Can we do that? Can't we do that?
Sure.
Sure, why don't you give her your three again, just so she's clear?
I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So I, after hearing all the comments, I give Peggy Wood my three, Mary Ross my two, and who did I say? Paul Kelly my one.
Okay.
Mr. Hoffman?
My three are Adam Holmes for three, Mary Ross for two, and Peggy Wood for one.
All right. Ms. Bogart?
All right, Paul Kelly for three, Kevin Tracy for two, and Peggy Wood for one.
Okay. Mr. Belvin?
I'm going to give Adam Holmes three for mine, Paul Kelly, two, and Peg Wood, one.
All right. Why don't we give Ms. Weston a minute to add those up?
Did you do yours? Did you do yours?
I did, I led off.
Okay. I'm done.
All right. So, Ms. Weston, who are our three at-large appointees to the screening committee?
Margaret Wood, Adam Holmes, and Paul Kelly.
All right, and you will communicate with them tomorrow that they've been chosen?
Yes.
Thank you very much. And thank you to everyone that applied. It was a, I think I speak for the entire board when I say it was a very, 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 very difficult decision.
Mr. Chair?
Ms. Hewens?
I don't know about the rest of you, but I'd like to say, I'd like to echo that. It was, it had to have been grueling. I know what that sort of thing is like. So thank you, everyone. Much appreciated.
Anyone else? All right, moving right along. So the discussion and possible vote for the Town Administrator Screening Committee selection of the business representative. Back when we set out the parameters and who we thought would be a good idea for the screening committee, the board agreed that we should have a representative of the Carver business community. We didn't really set up parameters for how to choose that person, whether it should be someone from the list of applicants or whether we should discuss some people and possibly, almost draft somebody and send out a request for someone. So I'm willing to listen to discussion. Ms. Hewens?
Yeah, I, just going off of what Jen was mentioning, I'd like to nominate, sorry, Kevin Tracy as the business rep. He was one of the applicants for this position and just happens to own a tree farm in town, so.
I would second that.
Any further discussion on how to choose or who we should choose as a business representative? Mr. Hoffman?
I guess my question is, for these, I just want to make sure technically we're safe on this, that the people that applied, were they only applying for the three at-large? Would we run into any problems if we picked one of these as the?
I think when we put out the call for applicants for the screening committee, we didn't even know we wanted a business committee person at that time. So they were applying for one of the three at-large positions. That's my belief. I mean, whether we, but we didn't even, had discussed that we wanted a business representative at that time.
Yeah, I think when we put it out, we didn't even know how many members at-large we wanted. It was just a matter of if you're interested in any capacity, let us know. Makeup will be determined later.
I think that's correct.
So it was just if you want to be involved at all, let us know.
And if I may, Mr., as it turns out, at least two people on this list own their own business. Maybe more, that I don't know of.
There's more.
Any further discussion? Mr. Belvin?
I think we should put a call out and have an appointment at our next meeting. Just so the business community can turn around and say, hey, we were notified, okay, fine, that we're looking for somebody within the business community to serve on this committee. Not to say the people I know that have businesses here aren't good enough. I'm just saying that we really didn't put it out there for businesses until after we put the notice out. So I think it would behoove us to go ahead and put it out there for at least till our next meeting.
I tend to agree with that. Nothing against anyone in particular, but we didn't particularly look for a call from members from the business community. And I just wonder if it wouldn't be worth our time to put that out there with a short, perhaps, seven-day window to apply. I don't, I think we could move along with everything else on the charge to the committee. I don't think it would hold anything up if we held up that one spot. Ms. Hewens?
So if I may, and this may be too much remembering going on here, but when we did decide to put a business rep on the committee, was that after the screening committee applicant, applications closed or before? Do we remember that, Mrs. Weston? I know I don't remember, I was just wondering if you did.
I thought that was, if I'm incorrect, and it could be, again, I thought that was at the same meeting where we voted on whether or not to accept the three applications that came in late, which would have been the same day, that would have been after they closed. I think, I could be wrong, but I think that's when we-
I think it closed on the 14th or 15th, and your meeting was on the 18th.
Okay.
So it was after they closed.
Mr. Chair, I have a question. When we say put it out to the business community, what does that mean and how is that done?
I think it would probably be a post on the website, the same way we put out a call for applicants to the screening committee. And the business community is what it is. There's folks that are involved in business in Carver, it could be, it's pretty wide-ranging.
So is it going to involve any, will anyone be reaching out to specific business owners to encourage them? Or will it just be a here-we-go type deal? If it's the business, I just want to make sure that the business, business community is all given. I don't know, it's hard, but if we're doing business community, what does that mean and how are they going to know? Are we going to put it out there and then also reach out to business owners that we know, or what's the expectation?
Just speaking for myself, I think we would post it the same way we posted applicants for the screening committee on the website. Perhaps we could ask the newspaper to put that out there as well. Certainly, if folks knew of people that they thought would be a good fit, they could reach out. But there's only so many ways to reach out.
So would someone, would you guys suggest we notify Mr. Tracy that he may, I guess, resubmit? Since he would qualify under the business owner?
I think anyone on this list who owns a business, I know Mr. Dayhill and Mr. Tracy own a, well, I don't know, actually. I take that back. I know at least Mr. Tracy does. But there may be others on here who I don't know, so.
I think if they've expressed an interest in being on the screening committee, they've already expressed an interest in being on this. I don't, personally, myself, I don't think they'd have to resubmit. I think if they've expressed an interest to be on the screening committee, they've already expressed an interest to be on the screening committee.
So it's not just new applications or submissions?
I don't think so. I think if there was someone, just speaking for myself, I think if there was someone on this list that was a businessperson and they were interested in being on the committee, they've already expressed that interest. That would satisfy me. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, so I agree that we put it out there, and the people that have already applied that have their own businesses. And I think from what I remember was Ms. Blanchard said she does her own business stuff. Mr. Dayhill owns a business, and Mr. Tracy, too. And I think there was, may have been one more, but I'm not sure. But no matter what-
Oh, yeah, Mrs. Nowan, that's right.
So, I mean, like I said, those people have already applied, and I think they should be incorporated into whatever, whoever else comes forward.
Yes, Mr. Hoffman?
I just had a question. Does the business representative have to be a Carver resident?
I would, I would think so.
Okay, that would be my opinion.
No, I'm just saying we make sure we state-
Yeah, I would want, I think it's important that we have people who have an invested interest in Carver.
Okay, I agree. I just, the way we talked about it was a business owner, so we have to make-
Yeah, and I don't think it necessarily has to be business owner, per se. It could be someone deeply involved in a business, but not necessarily the owner. But they need to be a Carver resident. But they need to be a Carver resident.
Yeah.
I kind of disagree with that. I think they have to be a business owner within our town. We open it up to, well, they can be a manager of a business in town or... And a town resident. Or they can be a clerk for a business in town.
That's a good point.
It really should be a business owner within the town. Just my opinion.
That's a good point.
They should be a resident.
Okay. So, are we agreed on that? So, Ms. Weston, could you get that posted on the website? And we will vote on that on the next meeting, on the 6:15 meeting. So, moving along, a discussion and...
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Ms. Hewens.
I just thought of something. Are we going to be interviewing those applicants?
Ms. Hewens, that's the next one question.
Sorry.
Does the board think at this point we need... I think unfortunately, in the interest of time, we may not have time to interview all the applicants. We may need to just ask them for a detailed application. I don't know how the rest of the board feels like that. I'll...
That's fine.
But I... Thoughts? Does anyone have any...
I agree.
Any thoughts on that? Okay. So, we'll just ask them as detailed as an application as they want to submit, and we'll vote on those applications. So, we should probably have a... We should probably vote on a closing date for those applications. If the meeting's gonna be 6:15, should we say... Let me just look at a calendar here.
The Friday before?
What is that date, Mr.?
Actually, we need the names before for the...
For the agenda, I think.
We do need the names. So, do you think if we said June... June 10th? June 10th? That would give us time... Ms. Weston, that's the Thursday before the meeting? That would give us time to get them on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. So, June 10th at 9:00 a.m.? Everyone okay with that?
Yep.
All right. So, June 10th at 9:00 a.m. will be the closing date for applications for the business representative.
Excuse me. So, June 10th at 9:00 a.m.? Okay. Because I know we ran into some problems before when it was 12 o'clock. And we went the end of the business day? Wednesday, the day before, or...
I think... Well, the thing is, we need time to get their name on the agenda.
Right. So, that's what I'm saying. Maybe the day before, by the end of business day, 5:00?
For June 9th at 5:00 p.m.? Is that... Would the board prefer that?
Can we just say like 11:59? Because last time there was someone like who's at like 5:11. Like, let's just do just the day.
Why don't we do this? Ms. Weston, we want to make sure you have enough time to get these folks on the agenda. What time would allow you folks in the office to get their names on the agenda?
June 10th at 9:00 a.m. is fine.
Okay. We're good.
Okay. June 10th at 9:00 a.m. All right. Moving along to discussion and possible vote on the creation of a charge for the Town Administrator Screening Committee. And there's a number of potential items here. And I asked Ms. Weston, and she graciously indulged me to send out bullet points to the group just so we'd know in advance what a lot of things we need to be thinking about. Because there's a lot of different things that need to go into this charge, and we need to be very careful that we don't miss anything. So, potential items on the charge to include, but not limited to, selection of a chairperson by a date set by the select board. Select board to determine the number of finalist candidates for the town administrator position. The TASC, which is the Town Administrator Screening Committee, is to bring to the select board by a date set by the select board. Select board to determine whether or not to authorize the screening committee to use a recruiter or consultant. Screening committee to approve an advertisement of the town administrator position in collaboration with the town administrator... I'm sorry. In collaboration with the Human Resources Coordinator by a date set by the select board. Town Administrator Screening Committee to receive and review resumes. Select board to authorize the screening committee to work in collaboration with the Human Resources Coordinator to develop interview questions by a date set by the select board and laws surrounding allowable interview questions. TASC to interview town administrator candidates by a date set by the select board. TASC to present an unranked list of finalist candidates to the select board by a date chosen by the select board. TASC to must comply with the Town of Carver... Town Administrator Bylaw, Chapter 3. And a discussion as to whether to include the current interim town administrator as a finalist on the list of candidates for the permanent town administrator position to present to the select board. Since if the TASC does not include the current interim town administrator, the TASC would effectively be firing the current interim town administrator. So, why don't we start at the top of the list here? And it's important that we are very careful on these dates because the current interim town administrator has a contract that will... Has an end date. And we have to work backwards from that contract so that we have a list of candidates in front of us with time to make a choice. Mr. Belvin?
Can I take one thing out of order first?
Absolutely.
Please. I think the discussion whether to include the current interim town administrator as a finalist in the list, candidates for permanent town administrator to present to the select board. I think we should take that one first.
I agree. I think that makes good sense. Any... Anyone opposed to that? Okay. Let's take that out of order. Mr. Belvin?
I'm gonna make a motion that we include the town administrator in any finalist list that given by the Town Administrator Screening Committee. That's my motion.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'm sorry. Could you say your motion again, Bob?
I motion that we allow the town administrator to be on the finalist list for the Town Administrator Screening Committee.
So, he should be automatic... You want him automatically included?
On the list?
On the list.
Okay. Got it. I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion. Mr. Belvin?
My rationale is two things. Number one is he's been taking on the role here in this town. But also, not to say that the Town Administrator Screening Committee, I don't want them to turn around and think about this, having this also on their plate. Taking it right off their plate, no matter what. That means really... We're basically saying you don't have to interview for the position. In all actuality. That's pretty much what I'm saying, is you don't have to interview for it because you're automatically gonna be on the list. That would be my opinion. That way, it allows them to look at everyone else to give us three names. Just my opinion, sorry. Kind of going out of order. But give us three names, and we have four different individuals that we can pick from. That's just my thought process. It makes them to be a little more cleaner and objective amongst the other candidates.
Thank you. Any other further discussion?
No. I agree. I think that was a good point.
Ms. Bogart?
Should we just confirm with the interim town administrator? He would like to be finalist.
I think if the interim town administrator chooses not to be a finalist, he can certainly withdraw his name.
And let us know.
Okay.
We're not forcing him.
Right.
I think you know the answer.
For the record.
Although I will decline at the moment because it seems not to be in order, but...
Any further discussion? Mr. Hoffman?
I have some comments on this. And this is nothing personal about the present interim town administrator. The reason I ran for the select board as a writing candidate was I didn't agree with how the present interim town administrator was chosen. And the first thing I did when I got elected, I went to Rick and told him it's not personal. It was just the... Trying to think the nice way of saying it. It's the process that he was selected I didn't agree with. So, I don't think... The thing that I don't like about this, it says it was essentially we would be firing him. So, firing the interim town administrator? The interim town administrator has a contract that ends December 31st. So, we're not firing that person. And I don't mean to talk around you. I'm not... We're not firing him. His contract expired. He's open to apply for the town administrator job, just like everybody else is. By having him automatically a finalist, it just sends the wrong message to the town. We want this fair and open. And again, qualifications are there. He'll be one of the finalists. If not... If there are three other or four other people that are more qualified, then so be it. I just don't like the optics. And this is... I'll be 100% honest. This is why I got involved with the select board this year, because I didn't think it was right the way it was done last year. And I just don't want to have this, here we go again. You know? Just passed over right to the finalist. Again, doing a good job. He's probably gonna be one of the finalists. But again, I just don't like giving a free pass. Basically, you know, sports terminology, abide to the finals. I don't agree with that. You know? I just... Especially the terminology firing. We're not firing anybody. He has a contract. He's renewing his... Fulfilling his contract. If anything, if you look at the contract, which I got a copy of, and he can be renewed. He's not being renewed. Or, I'm sorry, extended by the select board. So, we haven't extended it. So, the screening committee's not firing him. Again, he filled his contract. If anything, the select board hasn't extended it. So, to say that the screening committee fired, I have a real problem with that. And again, I just think he shouldn't get a... You know? The town admin... The interim town administrator should not get a free pass to the finals. That's my feelings.
Ms. Bogart, and then Mr.?
The word firing definitely struck me, too. I didn't bring it up, but I like... Because we used fired before. So, I definitely didn't like that either. What you said really resonated. So, I agree with Jim. The way you said it was...
I'm sorry, Ms. Bogart?
No. Just the way he said it, it really resonated with me.
Mr. Belvin?
I'd like to rescind my motion. I agree, Jim. Thank you for speaking up. I appreciate it.
All right. So, is there a motion? Hearing none.
So, I guess I'll... Correct me if this is... Do we need to make a motion to not automatically?
There's been no motion to do this.
Okay.
So... There is no motion, correct? Okay. All right. So, we will take... We have taken that out of order. All right. Going back to the top of the order, the selection of a chairperson by a date set by the select board. So, I put together a little timeline here, my own. I would... Thinking for my own, I think the board has to meet. I think they should meet certainly as quickly as possible. I would recommend that they meet by July 1st and select a chairperson at that meeting. That's not a motion, but that's... That's a suggestion.
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second that the board should meet and select a chairperson by July 1st. Any further discussion?
So, the 15th... So, excuse me through you, Mr. Chairman. So, the 15th of June is when this board will basically be put together? Well, the final...
Yeah. The board is put together now except for the one business representative. That representative will be added.
And the one public?
And the public. Yes. That board... Barring some kind of unforeseen event, yes. The final screening committee will be 100% put together by June 15th.
And so, we're giving them two weeks to get together and elect a chairman?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that's put out publicly. That's the timeline.
All right. So, the select... The Town Administrator Screening Committee will get... Will meet and select a chairperson by July 1st. Let's see. So, the select board to determine the number of finalist candidates for the town administrator...
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Ms.?
I'm sorry. Do you want us to vote on that?
Yes. We probably should. You know what? I hadn't thought, but we probably should vote on everything. That's right. So, we have a motion.
I'll make a motion that we have... The screening committee must meet by July 1st. At their first meeting, they have to vote on a chairperson.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Select board to determine the number of finalist candidates for the town administrator position. The Town Administrator Screening Committee is to bring to the select board by a date set by the select board. And I guess, first of all, we should probably consider how many applicants we want the board to suggest to us. Any thoughts on the board... For the board there? Mr. Hoffman?
How many were in the... The last time there was a search committee? How many were passed to the finals?
The...
Five?
I think you're right. I think you're right. I mean, I couldn't participate in it, but I know it was more than three. So, I'm pretty sure it was five.
It was four.
It was four?
Four.
Okay.
And there were four the last time, too, when we picked the interim town administrator? And there were four the last time too, when we picked the interim town administrator? And I thought four was a pretty good number. I think too many more would be, you, you'd almost have to go to multiple, I think, I think many more than four would be. I thought four was a good number.
I'll make a motion that we have four finalists, that the screening committee takes back to the board of selectmen?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for, that the screening committee will select four, and, and those, just so we know, those finalists should be unranked.
Correct.
Unranked, yes. Do, before we finish that motion, it says a, a date as well, are we gonna set a date?
Well, I think we should vote on the number first, and then select the date.
Okay.
So a, a motion and a second for four finalist candidates. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So four finalist candidates. And a date. Uh, again, just a suggestion. I would think, judging by Mr. LaFon's, uh, contract, and knowing that if we choose to go a different direction, that person may have to give, I think, the customary notice in a town administrator contract is 90 days to their town. We look back 90 days, we probably need, need the finalist candidates presented to us by September 1st or so, I would think. Uh, again, I don't know what.
Could I just ask, Mrs. Weston, do you have a little insight into this? Because I know you've been here before when this happened.
Yes, so Mark is right, uh, the typical timeline is that if you're choosing a town administrator that's currently in a contract, they would have to give 90 days, which would bring you to, to September 30th, and you guys would need time to interview or do whatever you need to, to, to do. So that would bring you to the beginning of September for you to have that time.
Yes, Mr. Belvin?
Um, with that, um, because of the contract with Rick, what does it say for us that we have to give him notice in there? Is there anything in there that says we have to give so much notice time to him? Trying to remember, I don't remember.
His contract ends December 31, 2021.
Okay.
You have the option to extend it, I think in October, October 1.
Okay, so that, that's why I just wanted to make sure that we're compliant with the contract. Thank you. So I'll make a motion that September 1st, that the, um, town administrator screening committee comes to the, gives us a finalist list.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Uh, second.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Just as a, um, September 6th is Labor Day. So the 7th would be a, the Tuesday, obviously, that, so we don't have to, they don't have to have it, give it to us by our meeting date, correct? We're just giving them September 1st as a date?
I think it's important that we have the date, could we, then we have to set up interviews.
Right.
So.
Okay, I just wanna make everyone aware that it's on the, 6th is Labor Day, so that's fine.
We have a motion and a second for a, a date of September 1st, any further discussion?
And this is for the TS, Town Administrator Screening Committee to give us the number of candidates that they have?
Finalist candidates, that's correct. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so September 1st on the list. Uh, select board to determine whether or not to authorize the screening committee to use a recruiter or consultant. Thoughts from the board? Ms. Bogart?
I absolutely think they should have that at their disposal. I've referenced the webinars I took early on, it said the hiring a town administrator is maybe the most important thing that someone does, and they had people from municipalities all over the state. And it was, I think unanimous, that they said use a recruiting firm if at all possible, because from their experience, you will get a larger, more qualified candidate pool. That's just coming from them, so I would absolutely want to authorize the screening committee to use a recruiter or a consultant.
Thank you, Ms. Bogart. Any, Mr. Belvin?
Um, I also agree, it, it will help focus the screening committee, I think, a little bit more, and to provide a better list of candidates, um, for it. Um, but I also wanna make sure that it's within a financially, uh, for the town, that we don't overspend on, on it, because it can get very expensive, um, with a recruiter or a consultant. So I think we need to put a cap on how much they can actually spend for a recruiter.
And if, if I may, Mr. Chair, so my thought on that is that, um, and I don't have any connection to this group at the Collins Center that's out of UMass Boston, but my thought on that is that since they're a public entity, I suspect they would be less expensive than a private entity. This is part of the, the job they do. They did help us last time, so.
Any other thoughts, Mr. Belvin?
I mean, I, I prefer to leave it up to the screening committee who they pick, and not us to go ahead and.
I was just addressing.
One or not, one or another, but it's up to them to decide that, where they wanna go with that, so.
No, I agree, I was just addressing your cost concern, in terms of the public entity probably not costing quite as much.
Mr. Hoffman, do you have any?
I, I like your idea, but I have no idea what a recruiting company or consultant would cost, so I don't feel as though putting a, um, a cap on it, I feel comfortable doing that, I mean, so I don't know whether you're talking thousands or hundreds or, um.
I think it's thousands, but it's not hundreds.
Right, right, well, I'm, I was being sarcastic, but.
It's probably over 10,000.
Sorry?
It's most likely going to be either towards 10,000 or over, maybe in that vicinity, seven to 15,000.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
The link.
For private?
So, Mr. Belvin?
Um, I'll make the motion that we allow the, um, town administration screening committee to hire a recruiter or a consultant, and, uh, no more than $16,000. Anything more, they need to come before the board of selectmen.
Is there a second?
A second.
Uh, discussion?
My thought process on the, the amount of money was just to, uh, give them a heads up of where we're looking at, and, um, some flexibility when they start looking at different, um, screening committees, uh, not screening committee, recruiters and companies. That's why I put a figure of that on, um, you said, and like I said, I want them to be able to pick and choose what they want, and not just to settle. I agree.
Uh, I'll just say, I think the tough thing here is, I honestly have absolutely no idea what a screening committee is, is, what a consultant would cost in this case. And I hate to cap them at a, at a number that's obviously too, too low, I, I, I have no idea. So I, I, I wonder if perhaps there's a, there's a way to reach out to some other towns that have done this recently and get an idea of, of what they, what they spent. I just hate to see us capping them and finding out right away that we have to come back. Mr. Belvin?
Well, I, what my motion was, was 16,000, anything more than 16,000, they need to come back to the board of selectmen. And we'd probably be asking the question, well, why? All right, and what were the other prices for the other ones? But we will turn around and make those decisions at that time, would be my opinion.
That's a good point.
Yeah, Bob did have a, excuse me, he did have a, out in that, that if, if it was more.
That's right.
Okay.
So.
Ms. Bell, Ms. Yuen.
Can I make an alternative motion? Um, and that would be to let the screening committee, um, choose a consultant and then ask us, and, and get the prices. Um, obviously, they're not gonna just make one phone call getting a consultant, so they'd be calling at least three, presumably, and then maybe bring those prices, because things may have gone up since the last time we did this, I just, I have no clue what it would cost.
Well, I think, Mr. Belvin has made a motion, so we need to act on, is there, has a, a second to that motion?
Yes, Sarah.
I seconded it, so I'm, I'm withdrawing my second, I'm making my own motion.
Okay. So we have a motion for Mr. Belvin, is there, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, so discussion on Mr. Belvin's motion. I, I, just personally, I, Mr. Belvin, I understand your motion. I just, I think I feel a little more comfortable if we were to do a little more research first, just to, just to have some idea of what the, the number was, and that's why I, I tend to lean, lean a little more toward Ms. Yuen's thoughts on this.
Okay.
But, we have a motion, and a, Mr. Belvin?
Now that. My thought process on this originally was to put a cap on it, just so the companies that are out there say, hey, if we don't have a cap, well, we can send them a bill for whatever we want, and here you go. All right, it's a blank check for a town, here you go, all right, where it could be 20, 30, $40,000, who knows? And then we're in a position where, oh my God, that's a lot of money to be shelling out. Okay, at least if we put something out there as a, say, hey, there's a cap here, and this is what's already put out there, and companies know that we're looking at the finances of this town to make sure we're not spending too much. So, um, I'm.
Mr. Chair, so that was why I suggested that maybe we should let the screening committee do that work, go out there, interview at least three companies, which I think is standard practice in a town, and then come back to us with those numbers. Because like I said, I, it's been a long time, and I, I don't, I have no clue what things would cost nowadays.
I don't, Mr. Hoffman?
I just have a question, where does the money for this recruiting, recruiter come from?
Well, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. LaFon, but I believe that money would have to come out of the selectmen's budget, and if additional monies are needed, we would have to go to the finance committee for a transfer, correct?
Yes, correct.
So we're gonna have two FinCom people on that screening committee, just throwing it out there.
Which, which we gotta be careful with, because reflecting upon the bylaw, the finance committee bylaw, in terms of having the ability to vote on something related to the screening committee's effort.
That's true.
I have to review what that opinion was from counsel.
That's a good point, so you're, you're.
I just, I'm not making, drawing a collusion, I just think something needs to be considered.
So, if, if I may, Mr. Chair, so are you suggesting, Mr. LaFon, that we need to find out whether the two finance committee members could even vote on whether to spend those funds? I, I just, I didn't hear you real well, so I'm not sure what you said.
Um, yeah, I think the answer would be yes, we need an opinion, um, well, I think if, to crystallize what I think the, the opinion, I believe, already is, is that, um, a member of the finance committee, um, can serve on the screening committee, but they would not be able to take any votes on, on the finance committee related to the work of the screening committee.
Okay, all right.
But just so we're clear, that doesn't affect this motion, all it would mean is that the finance committee meeting, if they, if they needed to do a transfer, they would have to abstain from that vote.
That is correct, yes.
So everything could still come from the selectmen's fund if you.
Yeah.
Whatever you wanna call it.
Yeah, the only, the only issue would be if we needed a finance committee transfer.
There's no special fund, but yeah.
All right, all right, but we are, we are moving a little bit afar from our original. So we have, we have a motion for Mr. Belvin, it, we still.
Yeah, I still, I'm still wanna keep my motion, um, but I wanna expand on this to say, if, if we didn't put a figure on, said, you guys go get the information, all right, then you come back to us with figures and everything, then it's really, in my opinion, the board making the decision of what screening committee they're gonna be getting.
You know, that's an excellent point, Mr. Belvin.
And that's, that's my fear, that's why my motion, I think, should stand.
I think that's, that's an excellent point, I don't think we wanna put our, interject ourselves into this process, I, I think that's an excellent point. Um, although we still may, if they need additional money, it's possible we're still in there, but. All right, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion?
Wait, so, trying to combine them, so Sarah's motion was to let them, kind of let us know what's out there and what the going rate is.
Right.
Bob's motion was to say no more than 16,000, with the concern that we would end up choosing the recruiter? Was that what you just said, or we would be influencing it?
If we didn't put a, my feeling is if we didn't put a cap on it to say, there's, this is how much you spend, if you need more, then fine, you come to us, that means they're picking the company saying, this is the company we want, all right, and this is how much it's gonna cost us, okay? In the other sense of saying, if we don't put a cap on, and they say, okay, fine, they come back to us and say, yeah, we have these five companies, and, well, we kinda want this one, but they're the most expensive one, and we're like, well, we're not gonna give you that amount of money. It could turn around and say, well, then you gotta go less. We're not gonna give you 30,000, we're only gonna give you 20, all right? Then it's us in control of it. So if we put it, my feeling is to put it in their hands, let them come to us, say, this is who we want, if we need more money, here it is. All right, and just my, like I said, I just, I think that's a cleaner way of doing it, in my opinion.
Is it, is it unreasonable, and it may be, because I think a lot of us have admitted we have no idea how much this costs? Since the committee is not fully formed, there's still that business rep opening, so we'll be working on it at our next meeting. Is it feasible to think someone, I don't know, with, with Elaine's help or us, could reach out to a firm or to, going back to Fairhaven, they used someone, reach out to another town and say, hey, we saw you use someone, you know, ballpark, how much did that cost you? So then we would know what cap to set for the screening committee. It may be unreasonable to you, just throwing out ideas.
I like that idea.
Ms. Weston?
I just reached out to someone in another town, and, and 16 is safe, but 18 would probably be the safest bet, if you just wanna increase it a few thousand, just to be safe, because we don't know what we'll get for a quote, but they know they're dealing with municipalities.
Okay.
That don't have large budgets.
Mr. Belvin, any chance you'd consider changing your motion?
No.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for, to authorize the screening committee to set up to six, spend up to $16,000 for a, we have a motion and a second to authorize the screening committee to use a recruiter or consultant, and to spend up to $16,000. Anything more, they would have to come back to the select board.
Is that in that, like, they would be clear that this is not like steadfast? If you find someone you're passionate about, come back to us, I think that's his intent.
Yes.
So make that very clear to them.
Mr. Belvin, we spent a long time, did I, did I state your motion correctly?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We have that motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. All right. Uh, let's see, screening committee to approve advertisement of the town administrator position in collaboration with the human resources coordinator by a date set by the select board. I guess my thought, obviously, the first step in anything we do here is to, after we form the committee, is to advertise for the position. So I guess my, my thought, just putting it forward, was if we, if they meet and select a chairperson on June 1st, they ought to advertise by June 15th. I'll put it out there for the board, for their, their thoughts, but.
July 1st.
Ms. Bogart, I'm, I'm, July 15th, thank you, Mr. Hoffman.
If, if they are using a recruiting firm, shouldn't they do that in conjunction with the firm? Not post the job before the firm can help with that? Making the official posting and doing everything together, I would think that.
That's probably a good, a good point, but we, we also need to, maybe we need to put a date in there to, let, ask them to, to let us know whether they're gonna use a consultant or not.
So, Mr. Townsend, could I, um, ask Mrs. Weston?
Absolutely, Ms. Yuen.
So, Mrs. Weston, do you, I know advertising sometimes is really tricky, so if you wanna know by this date, sometimes you have to go back three weeks, two weeks, three weeks, and is there something you can, can you help us with this somehow? So.
So I think when you wrote the agenda, the intent was, there was no firm involved. If they are going to meet by July 1, maybe they should decide by July 1 if they wanna use a recruiting firm, and contact the recruiting firm, and find out their timeline. And if their timeline can meet that, then it would be advantageous to use that.
All right.
So, do we need to vote on this?
I think we do, and we, we, I think we should probably, I'm sorry, Mr. Belvin?
So, I'll make a motion that, um, if the town administrator screening committee chooses not to use a recruiter or consultant, they must post by July 16th. It's a Friday.
All right. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
All right, we have a motion and a second, Mr. Belvin?
So my thought process, their first meeting, they're gonna make the chairperson, um, they're gonna discuss the charge, they're gonna have to discuss if they're gonna use a recruiting firm or a consultant, and if they're not going to, if they feel that they can do it on their own in some way, shape, or form, or hybrid model or whatnot, that they get this notice out, um, for advertising, and depending on where they wanna advertise it out, it gives them that timeframe, uh, but if not, then we go back into, um, how long do we want them to interview people, say they get 20 applicants in, and they go through the applicants, and you have your yeses, and your maybes, and your noes, and they still have, out of those 20, 14 that are yeses, that they wanna interview, and they bring them in, those are 14 people they have to interview out, um, and we want a finalist list by September 1st. So this is a really short period of time.
It is.
For them to get the job done, um, which means they'll be meeting probably a couple times a week, easy. So, if they're not gonna use a recruiting firm, because a recruiting firm's gonna be a lot, uh, cleaner, to the extent of saying, okay, they can put a blast out very quickly to get applicants, in my opinion. So they should be able to do that within a three-week timeframe, but that still brings them back into, um, August, uh, the first week of August, to when, so. That was my opinion for July 15th, without a recruiting firm, with a recruiting firm, then, um, it's up to recruiting firm to put it out there.
Yeah.
And they'll do it quickly, I'm sure they, they will take our bylaws and say, these are our bylaws for town administrator, and craft it out.
Yeah.
I, I think you're right, I think that's the key, we're working on a very short timeframe here, and, and we, we need to make sure they know the urgency of that. Um, I'm sorry, Ms. Yuen.
Yeah, I was just going to say, um, isn't there a requirement that this, a position like this has to be advertised, like in the Beacon? Or is there some other place where it has to be advertised?
I, I thought I'm aware of.
No?
It usually is.
There's no state.
Wouldn't it normally be on the MMA site? Isn't that normally where you'd advertise that type?
I don't think that's a state requirement.
Okay.
Okay.
That, that would be a typical place to advertise, yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry, so we have a motion, Mr. Belvin, could you, could you just restate your motion?
Um, my motion is that the town administrator screening committee, um, post by July 16th for the position of town administrator for the town of Kaver, um, if they're not using a recruiter or a consultant.
Okay, is there a second? There was a second from Mr. Hoffman, correct? Any further discussion?
Should we put in that, amend that, that if they do use a recruiter, we have to set a date for that? Or do you just mention that the recruiter will do that?
In my opinion, the recruiter will be, uh, quite advantageous to get this done and running.
I mean, the recruiter. I mean, the recruiter would know when we have, we have a date for finalists to be given to us by.
That's right.
So, I think that, that would date would probably go to the recruiter, and they'd act on that.
Correct.
Yep.
Any further discussion?
But that's part of the motion, isn't it?
Is that part of the motion, Bob? I, Mr. Belvin, I don't think it was.
Which part?
The, if they do have a consultant, the consultant will set the date.
I didn't say that, but, um, our, their, their finalist date is September 1st. They gotta get their job done with the screening committee by September 1st.
Right.
So, that means they gotta get on their hands and start working.
And, but they've done this a lot of times, so I'm sure they would know.
Right.
Ms. Bogart?
This is a big deal, and as we're talking about it more, it's, it's coming to fruition and building and building. In my opinion, I almost feel like it might make things a little bit easier if we just say they will use a recruiter, not, we're authorizing them to, 'cause then there's, well, you have to advertise now, but if you do this, that. So, so in my opinion, I think we should just say, you, you will use a recruiting firm, and have a contract with a firm by July 15th, or something like that. But I, I think the use of a recruiting firm should be mandatory, for a harsh word, 'cause then it takes it off them, like, oh, do we need it? Do we not? Can we handle it? Like...
Well, we already voted, as a board, to authorize the, them to choose if they wanted to use a screening committee. Do we want to go back and revisit that?
Well, I, I personally would like to go back, because I think, number one, it'll make it so much easier for the screening committee. I don't know that any of the people on it now, although they're all very capable, I don't think any of them have, have done that in the past. I know if I were on there, I would want a consultant. Are you kidding me? Absolutely.
I agree.
Mr. Belvin would be...
And it simplifies, it simplifies everything.
Motion to discuss this?
No, I, I just, I think we, how much do the board of selectmen wanna get their fingers involved in the process?
Well, we're not telling them who to choose. We're just saying that they need to choose a consultant, to have some help.
But I don't want to be, I don't want them to be tied to, to that, say, all right, well, we have to do it, because board of selectmen said we want to, but...
Why don't we vote on your, your motion?
Okay.
And then we'll go back, and we'll vote as to whether to, whether the, to instruct the screening committee to use a, a coordinator. So, we have a motion and a second on Mr. Belvin's motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Ms. Hewens?
I'm, I'm sorry. To post the ad by the 7:16?
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I, I'm gonna vote no, too, because I think, anyway, yeah.
All right, so that's a three to two vote. Okay, now, we'll discuss whether to go back and instruct the screening committee to use a, a coordinator or a consultant. Ms., Ms. Bell?
I would, I would make a motion to charge the committee to use a recruiting firm or consultant and help the hiring of a town administrator.
Okay. Is there a second?
And, and I'll second that motion.
Okay.
And if I may, I think, as Jen said, and this is a really, really important thing that's happening here, and I don't think this in any way, shape, or form tells them who they should hire as the consultant. I mean, I might have my druthers, but I'm not on the screening committee, and so it doesn't, doesn't matter my druthers. But I think it will make things so much more, more easy, or make them easier, and it's a very short window, and, you know, I think we all wanna do this right.
One thought that I have, and, and I haven't heard that said, but I think it, I think it's accurate, is I don't think there's anyone on this screening committee that was on the screening committee the last time we chose a town administrator. So, there's no one with any experience.
Yeah.
And, and because of that, I, I favor this motion as well. I think, I think they should use a screening committee. I think, I'm sorry, I think they should use a consultant. All right, Mr. Belvin?
I just think that it's up to them. It's, if they want to, they may turn around and determine that, well, if we, wherever we wanna advertise, we advertise it out there, and, and the applications come in, they come in. Like I said, it's, it's, it's how they wanna run, run it, and I don't wanna tell them what to do.
Okay. Any further, Mr. Hoffman?
I, I can see Bob's point on that, but I don't think we're overstepping our bounds by telling them to use a recruiter, if, kind of, it's serious that we're actually helping them, I think, because no one does have the experience on the, on a screening committee. This is an important position for the town. So, yeah, I would, I would agree on that.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Four to one. All right. All right, I believe our next item is to set a date for the town administrator screening committee to receive and review resumes. And what are the thoughts, now that we've authorized them that they will use a, a recruiter, I think that, that responsibility may fall more to the recruiter. But, uh, what are the thoughts on the board on that? Mr. Belvin?
I, I think that they use a recruiter, that all the members should have all the information needed to make a informed decision. They would need those resumes, so...
And I, and I agree, and I think that's part of the reason you use a consultant, because they would be one place, all the resumes would be sent, and then the consultant would distribute them. That would be my understanding.
Thank you. But, and the question is, do we want to, do we want to set a date?
Oh, I didn't see that.
That's a date for those?
Yeah, do we want to set a date? I mean, obviously, they need to receive and review resumes, but the question is, do we want to give them a date by the time they have to receive and review all the resumes?
In my opinion, and again, I'm, I'm just going by other processes like this, I would think that the consultant would, would do that with the screening committee, because they're the ones who know, like, what has to be done, and how fast, and...
I would...
Just my thought, yeah.
Any, any further discussion?
If we gave the September 1st date of finalists to us, then the professionals, the, they would know how to get that September 1st done.
I agree. Any further discussion on this?
I, I agree, 'cause they're gonna take that September 1st date and work backwards.
That's right.
Yeah.
All right. Moving on. Select board to authorize the screening committee to work in collaboration with the human resources coordinator to develop interview questions by a date set by the select board, and laws surrounding allowed interview questions. And again, now that we've instructed the screening committee to work with a recruiter or a consultant, I would think that recruiter or consultant would, would take the, carry the weight on this. Any, any other thoughts?
Well, especially since we've already set up the date by which we want to have the candidate, so that will, that will give them an idea.
Any, any further discussion on this item? All right, seeing none. Town administrator screening committee to interview town administrator candidates by a date set by the select board. Do we want to tell them when they have to have their interviews done by, or, again, we're gonna leave that up to the recruiter consultant? Ms. Weston, do you have a thought on that?
No.
Okay. Ms. Bell, Mr. Belvin?
I leave it up to the board, the town administrator screening committee. Let them, this is their committee, let them run it. They know a end date of when we're looking for it.
Right.
All right, if they have an issue with it, then they should come to us and say, this is a, we need to extend this date, not enough time.
Any, any other thoughts? All right, moving on. Town administrator screening committee to present an unranked list of finalist candidates to the select board by a date chosen by the select board. I think we already did that, of, of September 1st, correct?
Correct.
So...
Question on that. Unranked. Why unranked?
I think that's the way it's commonly done. I know, I know when I reviewed a number of different towns that had done this, they all looked for unranked candidates, and I really think that's our job, to sort of...
Okay.
Interview those folks.
Yeah.
Any, any further discussion on that?
Well, the, the one that we voted on and approved for September 1st doesn't mention ranked or unranked.
I think it did. I think, I think the motion was unranked. Am I correct, Ms. Weston?
Yep.
It said unranked?
Yep.
Yeah.
It was added on after.
I think Mark added that.
It does.
With me.
Okay, I missed that, sorry.
Okay. No, okay, Mr. Hoffman?
That's fine, yep.
All right, town is, town administrator screening committee must comply with the town administrator bylaw, chapter three. That, that goes without saying, I think.
Yep.
So, moving on, does anyone else have anything that we should perhaps include in the charge to the town administrator screening committee? Ms. Bogart?
No, but I've talked about Fairhaven a bunch. I printed you guys off copies of that webpage that I said they did a good job. Can I just pass them around, just so you can see kind of what I referenced, in case you...
Sure.
Yeah.
Sure.
And it'll just be put in the records.
Yeah, I, I got extras.
Um, Mr. Chair?
Ms., Ms. Bogart. I'm sorry, Ms. Hewens?
That's okay. Since we voted on all of these, shouldn't we take a vote on whether the town administrator screening committee should comply with the town of Carver administrator, town administrator bylaw, chapter three?
We probably should. We probably should. Would you like to make a motion, Ms. Hewens?
I'd make that motion.
Is there? We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. All, right, is there any other thoughts, or anything that should be included in the town adminis, the charge to the town administrator screening committee?
Go ahead.
I, I guess, I would just ask Mrs. Weston if there's anything that you see that we're missing.
No, especially now that you've decided to use a consultant, they'll cover everything.
Okay. Mr. Belvin?
Yeah, I just, were you, are you going over the, what we received here as a charge? Is that...
No, I just, I just asked, asked Ms. Weston to include that. That was in the previous...
Right, okay, I just wanted...
Agenda as well. I just wanted the board to have as much information as they could on charges. That's all prior to the meeting. That was my intention to have that in.
I, I put my full faith in this committee that they will do an excellent job.
Anything else? All right, moving along. We've jumped around quite a bit in this agenda, but I believe we are at select board community announcements, if I'm not mistaken.
We're ahead of time, too.
Mr. Hoffman?
I would just like to mention that the Carver Athletic Boosters is having a golf fundraiser on June 19th, Saturday, day before Father's Day, so anyone's interested. A few more golf spots are open, and we're also looking for raffle prizes and whole sponsors, so you can contact the boosters or myself. Thank you.
Wonderful. Ms. Hewens?
Thank you. I, I don't have anything at this time. Thank you.
Ms. Bogart?
The, the first annual Carver Townwide Yard Sale is Saturday, June 26th, from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. Registration is open right now. Submissions are due June 17th, and the form and details are on carverma.gov.
Thank you. Mr. Belvin?
I just want people to, I know you don't go and look at the town website a lot out there, but please do. There is a Survey Monkey out there, survey for you to do on bike lanes and sidewalks throughout the town, and a bike lan, bike route and whatnot, and it goes by street, by street, by street, of a, how you rank it from one to four stars. So, it gives the town the opportunity to let this committee know if you want a bike lane, or to replace a sidewalk, or put a new sidewalk in. Gives you that opportunity. So, please, take your time, take, go right through it. It's really important for our town, so you have a voice in how our town runs. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Belvin. Ms. Hewens?
Could I just add something to what Mr. Belvin said? So, that's not a committee, that's the Complete Streets Program, which, and that survey's put out by, by SERPET, our planning, regional planning agency. But you're right, it's a great, it's a great, they have the whole map of the town, and that, this board approved the Complete Streets Program. So, this is what they're trying to get input on from the, from the residents.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could just also point out that the Council on Aging Open House is also on Saturday, the 19th. It's an all-day thing, so it shouldn't interfere with other events, but those details will be on the website.
Thank you, Mr. LaFond. And as far as for myself, I, I just wanted to take a minute to, to thank and recognize some people that I, I don't think get as much recognition as they should. This is the first meeting that we've had here since, oh, I believe, last March, that haven't been under COVID guidelines. And as far as Carver Town Hall, there were a number of town halls that were closed for a substantial period of time during COVID. Many, you had to make an appointment to come in and, and see somebody, if they were open at all. That wasn't the case with Carver Town Hall. We were closed for a couple of weeks at the beginning of the COVID pandemic, but since then, we've been open to the public. You've been able to come in and get your business done. And that, we owe that to the employees and the staff, and everyone that works here at Carver Town Hall. And I just want the public to be aware of that, and I just, I thought they deserved to be recognized for all their hard work during the pandemic, and I thought they should be thanked for all their hard work during the pandemic. So, I just wanted to, to say that, and, and that's all. And with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Second.
We have a motion to adjourn and a second. Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.